Good morning, everyone. Today is June 6, 2017. This is the regular me and the Tows County Board of Commissioners. I call this meeting to order for public...
Chairman Campbell.
Present.
Vice Chair Gago.
Here.
Commissioner Nelo.
Present.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Present.
Commissioner Don.
Present. I think we have a bar. If everyone would please stand, and I would like to recognize our Joya Oyse, and she's going to give us some words of wisdom to start our meeting off right. And thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you, sir.
And her son is very a clean fire marshal, but he's a special part of my heart. So happy to have you here today.
Thank you, sir. You know, those of us that live here in Tows County, we're very blessed to be surrounded by the mountains and by so much natural beauty. And I don't know about you, but it really speaks to my heart every morning when I have my coffee and stare out at the mountains. And so caring for these natural resources and the people is an awesome responsibility. And I know that y'all all spend a lot of your efforts doing just this. And I'd like to read Psalm 121. "I lifted my eyes to the mountains; from where shall my help come? My help comes from the Lord, who made heaven and earth. He will not allow your foot to slip; he who keeps you will not slumber. Behold, he who keeps Israel will neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord is your keeper; the Lord is your shade on your right hand. The sun will not smite you by day, nor the moon by night. The Lord will protect you from all evil; he will keep your soul. The Lord will guard your going out and coming in from this time forth and forever." Let's pray. Bobby, we thank you for your creation. Thank you for the blessings we have living here in Tows with the carried neighbors and the beauty that lifts our spirits. Be with the commissioners today and give them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions on our behalf. In their name, amen.
Thank you, everybody. Um, this is our honourable ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the highest court of justice. Thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts before we proceed? Hearing none. May I cite it on the agenda, the approval of the agenda. And first off, Commissioners, I ask, as we move item 10B, which is Discussion Regarding the RTV Resolution 2017-15. This is a resolution requesting members of the NCR TV amend the date of the election regarding the sunset of the existing District Rose Receipts Tax Anchorman. And I ask that that be moved to, um, an item between 6 and 7, to sort of stick it in there. Also, a second consideration. Commissioner O'Donnell, are you comfortable with proceeding since we have the novice issue with the, um, it is item 7D, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of Award for RFP 2017-15, that is, the substance abuse and/or alcohol detoxification and regular occupation services with Tows County. Are you comfortable with that or would you like that?
Um, Mr. Chairman, what item is, uh, over the E now?
So it could be E is missing. Oh, I'm sorry, it's E, I meant D. So it's Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of Award for RFP 2017-15, that is, the medical and social outreach service. That's a one that...
Well, Mr. Chairman, since I didn't have it in the large packet, I would move we postpone it to another time. I still don't have...
Ms. Reporter, is there a time for this, right, uh?
Documents.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I do not think there's time for this, necessarily, on this one. It's, um, it was the awards for our social outreach services, the RFP, that last year, since they're saying we're doing it, and I think most of the contracts are structured like that, anyway. But it would probably, probably go to 27. You need to just not have the contracts prepared and ready for July 1 kickoff time.
That could be a problem, so. Um, it is just the award of an RFP, have the RFP process, and the ill will have her recommendation. Are you okay with that?
Well, could I see a copy of the scoring of those five applicants? It wasn't on...
Yes, we'll get copies from Belvedere. Do you have any copies for the regular award? They're not going to be down with you. Um, it's now attached to the website as well.
Ms. Neal.
Hi, good morning. I'm sorry, I'm running late.
All right.
Um, Commissioner O'Donnell, if you look at the Evaluation Senator Report, the scoring is actually on. It's a seven-page report that, um, I put together.
It's not in the packet.
It should be.
Yeah, notice, you're getting the delivery.
Yeah, it's not there. So if I can have a hard copy, then I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure things like that get on in the packet because it's, I don't normally go check if there's missing items. I don't go to the website.
Yeah, I did choose those, anyway.
We can do it on the 27th with the contract the attorney is telling me and Ms. Reporter is telling me. So if you're more comfortable with that, I certainly respect your...
I would like to postpone it to the 27th.
Okay, so then amending my motion to postpone item 7E to a place appropriate in the agenda for the June 27, 2017 meeting. Any other additions, changes to the agenda? But you're second to my motion.
I'll second it, sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Um, so, quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Campbell.
Yes, thank you all. Um, next item on the agenda, citizens concerned. If there's any citizen here today that wishes to address the commission, I ask that you keep your comments to less than five minutes. This cannot be an action item. And although there's certain comments we can make, um, we can direct staff to look into this further if it's something that you're asking us to look into. Ms. Oyse.
And my role as a chaplain, we frequently divide things up into prayer requests and praise items. Well, last fall, we came to you with requests to endorse two participants in stress management classes. We were going to bring in a national acclaim. It was in our group of classes, um, to present. And Candace presented it for us, and we got a very nice letter of endorsement. And we used this letter to get a grant that completely paid 55 people to come from four different states and take this class. We had 15 people from Tows County. We had fire, we had police, we had MS, we had chaplains. These people are all trained in dealing with children in crisis and working with families' first responders, responders after a critical incident. And it so happened that our first night we were here, there was a very severe wreck in front of the Allmart, and our chaplains were the first on the scene. And one of them was retired police officer. So she did track control while I was waiting for the first responders. And the other chaplains calmed and talked with victims while they were waiting. And this is in the Tows News. There was a picture in the line about them. Um, this is what chaplains do. And we're always providing training. We do have a regional training center. Like I said, we had people from four different states. We had police chaplains, fire chaplains, hospital chaplains. Um, and they're going back out, all over New Mexico and Southern Colorado, Nebraska, Kansas, using these skills. And they also, since we had 15 of them already, we had 40 people staying in the hotels and giving out. And it's not much, but it's a start helping the Tows County. And the Tows pitch, yeah. We were able to use the volunteer fire department's big room, and the Tows also provided all of our sound equipment. So we really enjoyed widespread support, and it started right here in this chamber. And I really want to thank you. And we're hoping that next year, we will bring some training back. Oh, and by the way, we in MS got 14 contact hours. That's something else we want to do. They got 14 hours of recharge. So hoping to do more training that 2018. And once we figure out what we're going to do, I'd like to come back and ask for another letter of endorsement. Try to get one over there.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone else? Mr. Philpkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. We took you back home. Just had a week and a half road trip to California. Spent hours waiting in traffic and, um, and a lot of other things, but that's not what I'm here for. In the Tows News this week, they had an article on assessments. And I haven't gotten back to the author of the article yet. And I haven't posted any opinion on Facebook yet. However, I wound up protesting my assessment about 10 years ago. So I'm not sure if the policy is still the same. But, um, I'm not sure who did. I didn't get out of, I didn't get time, I didn't get, I didn't get a judge. Somebody was appointed by, I'm not sure how the appointment went down, whether that was a conflict of interest or not. But, um, in rules, you have to have like properties that they assess against that have been recently sold. We didn't have any where I was. I got an Adobe home. I was assessed against a frame home in Peñasco. And, um, and the person that was, had the authority to rule had been given a tool, and I, I mean, it was probably by the state, that they could reject anything, any evidence you had. Um, it was ruled against me that I had overcome the assumption of correctness. So, um, you know, that might be something for people to consider that want to protest their assessments anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpkin. Yes, sir. Please state your name, and it will be recorded.
Good morning, Chris Monieso. Um, good morning, good morning. Um, I'm the owner of El Nocese Broadcasting, and I wanted to come this morning to say thank you to the commission for the water's taxes you guys have allowed us to receive for helping us celebrate the Mother's Day event. Um, it's very well-measured, the event. Um, since I've taken the event over last year, we included Friday, which previously for 14 years was just a Saturday, Sunday event. Now included Friday. With that, obviously, I'm incurring a lot more expense. Um, so anything that you guys could do to help continue the success of the event and water's tax support is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Monieso.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Our favorite sheriff from the north, Mr. Ray.
Good morning, gentlemen, commissioners. I just want to say that last night, we opened an investigation into an missing person, a 60-year-old named Sanford. Is out hiking in the Al Saffo area, which as you know is a very treacherous terrain. Um, through area ground support, we were not able to locate her. We transitioned that morning to a state mission. Um, so if you hear helicopters and CO or any of those, I'm going through town. That's what that's about. Kidder and all the responders and recruiters and also interviews given to them. Sorry, there is...
Thank you very much, Sheriff, for doing the commission. Anyone else from here? Thank you all for being here. For those of you that are here on your own accord, and those of you that make me here, thank you guys for being here.
Excuse me, I have something else to open.
Yes, sir.
I am Bobby Montzakis. And I live in Rancho, San Camino Valley, Anoma. And I've been trying to get some speed bombs since 1984. That's why Mr. Romero was still commissioner, came in and out. Now, that road is very, you know, it's a straight line, and they're doing, uh, speeding. They're, they have racetracks. Even the state police is doing 80, 90 miles an hour. I've done everything in my power through Romero. I have gone at least three or four times. One time, I, we had a petition of 84, uh, well, 84 petitions. And it goes on and on. I've been here at least three or four, well, at least three or four times with petitions, and nothing has happened. Now that they installed that sewer line, I wish if they didn't put in the speed bombs on that road, I want to see if they can plow that road to where only horse wagons can go through. Because it is really a disaster there. They already killed a little boy there. Oh, quite a few years ago, there's been a lot of near misses. There's doing, they're doing drugs there. Just the other day, well, the other night, the state police were looking for Mexican evidence behind my house in my apartment. That doesn't sound right. We have to do something about it. Now, if Mr. Romero, since I've been fighting these things since 1984, if he can handle that road, I think he should remove himself, remove himself from office or have somebody else remove it. I can't do it because this day is, there's too much dirty politics. Uh, but, uh, I understand that South Alba, they were complaining about, um, the properties to where properties went off all of a sudden. Well, how was the one that started all that stuff? Now, when they installed those, that water gate in the Mafalaba Canyon 35 years ago, there was a conspiracy on that. And it just follows that. I did some, um, some outside work, and most of the people that were involved in that, in that water gate, well, once we installed that water gate, were all from Yanoke Malo. Now, the thing is, is that that water gate, when they installed it, they favored Secia Yanoke Malo and Secia Rancho de Tals. As it enters, we are in the middle, I have, I have some, uh, Secia Nelo Rios. And, okay, they, they left an entrance in the middle of 23 inches to where? Three lateral dishes, we never gave through there. The Secia Nelo Rios, the Secia Anoma, and the Chico dish, which is, each one of those dishes carry about 59 to 60 acres. So roughly 60, about 180, 180 acres. And they only gave us 23 inches. Now, when Secia Yanoke Malo, they gave her, which is Yanoke, you know, the Secia, the final system Martinez, they gave it, and mouth entrance, 40 inches. The Secia, uh, uh, the Secia Madre Grande, they gave up 56, I think 40 inches. Now, I have done some research. It's been about 10 years. I went through Geraldine and Trudy Salasal, and they came, I came up with about the same answer. There's 180 acres in Yanoke Malo that do not exist. Now, the state engineer, they had that recorded as something like 560 acres. Now, you tell me where you're going to find 560 acres in Yanoke Malo? And the Secia Madre Grande, that's a little, uh, the Secia Madre Grande, that's a little different because it's more, more straight up. Now, there's 130 acres that do not exist. Now, once he gets to that, I can remember that road by, by the, by the daddy Martinez's. They had a dish that is, that was routed to, um, Sunshine to irrigate those properties. Now, whose properties are not supposed to be irrigated with the Secia Madre? They merge with the Secia, the Preo Chito, right there. Where it's more level, those two dishes merge. And if they don't irrigate with the Secia Madre, they irrigate with the Secia Merchito. Now, I think that has to be, uh, something has to be done. Now, the thing is, is that I have contacted the state senators, uh, the US senators, Mr. Binger, uh, Mr. Johan. What's that come up with, the other, 10, 2000? Anyway, they always come up with a separation of powers. They say that they, I really think, I think that's a bunch of bull. They're going elsewhere, you know, now they're, like, they're going to Mexico and this and that because they, they send soldiers from Mexico to Iraq and elsewhere, and this and that. We have soldiers over here. We have a bunch of crack dodgers over here. We shouldn't go fight.
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez, you've used a lot of time, so if you would wrap up, please. Okay, I'll, I'll... Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here today. All right. Commissioners, hearing no other citizens wishing to address the commission, and thank you all for being here today. Um, item 6, Commissioners, is the minutes. First is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of May 4, 2017, regular minutes. But you're the commissioner. Move for rule, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second, quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Campbell.
Yes. Next item B is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of May 16, 2017, special meeting minutes. Commissioners, move for rule, Mr. Chairman. Second. Motion and a second, quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Campbell.
Yes. I have seized Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of May 16, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Move for rule. Let's make it have a motion and a second to approve of that as a basis. Quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Campbell.
Yes. And finally, I have a deal, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of May 19, 2017, special meeting minutes. So move. I'll second Mr. Chairman. All right. As I said, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep you on your toes. I'm starting to worry to go around. My, uh, motion to approve the May 19, uh, 2017 special meeting minutes. Quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Campbell.
Yes, thank you. Um, next item is from item 11. Item 10B, this is a discussion regarding the RTV Resolution 2017-15. This is a resolution requesting members of the NCR TV, the North Central Regional Transit Department, to amend the date for the election regarding the sunset of the existing District Rose Receipts Act. I think that Mr. Montalero will be presenting today. Um, he has briefed us on this numerous times. Now, we just need to get the ball rolling to, uh, to get the reauthorization of this tax going. It does have a sunset in 2022. He'll get into the details here today, but he'll, he'll just explain why we're doing this so early. And it has a lot to do with the grant funding possibilities and things of that. Mr. Montzakis, for being here. And also, lift him as Peter Dwyer, who's the legal counsel for the ATR TV.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, members of our commission. Thank you for having this matter on your agenda. Back in May, our board approved a resolution requesting that only Tows County, but our other county members consider many of their ordinances that they adopted back in 2008 regarding the GRT tax that was approved on a district-wide basis. Um, the ordinances that adopted that tax back then had two references in it. One was that the tax would sunset in 2024. And secondarily, it also stipulated when the elections would occur for renewal of that tax. And, um, the, uh, what we found is that, um, the fact that the ordinances contain this stipulation regarding when the elections could be done is contrary to our boards along range of strategic point of view that they would like us to go to the voters in 2018 to ask them to consider it would be the sunset clause. The sunset clause was placed in these ordinances that was never voted on as part of the ballot question that was close to the voters at that time. We're not taking an issue with that. Board feels strongly that, um, that sunset clause should be voted on by the voters. That's issues as to when it should be removed. But what we'd like to do is even have our board retain the ability to determine when they would like to go to an election and ask the question of removing the sunset to the voters. We, we like to, going 2018 as an indicator. We also like to preserve opportunities to go in 20, uh, 20 as well as 2022. In the event we're not successful in 2018, or if we're not successful in 2020, we still have the option to go in 2022. Um, we're not fond of special elections for, for us to conduct a special election. It would have to be done over a four-county area. It would be extremely expensive to do that. And voter turnout is normally low for special elections. So, um, although we recommend broad language as to when we could hold those elections, um, I can say, you know, we probably not inclined to hold one as a special election because of that reason. But what we'd like to hope that the county commission will consider is bringing forward our ordinance in the future, amending, um, the ordinance that Tows County adopted that would form the 2002, 2008, 2008-3. And, um, that's the ordinance that under Section 6. If he specifically needs for the election, if he would consider amending that ordinance in the near future, we'd appreciate that. I'd be glad to stand with your questions. Peter Dwyer, the RTV's legal counsel, is here as well. And he can respond to any questions if the commission are... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is the current quarter cent tax of 20. I mean, 20 has been in effect for, since, uh, 2009 is what it's been. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, a couple of questions. What happens if any of the counties, the voters, decide not to continue the tax? Um, and then, a second, do we have the option to lower it from 1/8 to 1/16?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. The vote that's being in the district is an aggregate vote. So let's say the voters in one county may, may end up voting against the tax, but the other three counties in the aggregate is, is greater than the non-votes that passes. So it's a district-wide aggregate vote of all the counties.
Okay, so if it loses in one county, but it...
Passes with all the others, as long as it's, yeah, as long as the best votes are greater than the rest. It passed.
And then, why are they doing this? I'm wondering if this has to do with possible tax reform on the state level?
Absolutely. Uh, we're doing this though, that, um, we have assurance that, um, that we'll continue to have a revenue source. The money to RTV is currently 70% of our operating revenues. Federal funds is composed about literally 30% of our ongoing revenues. So let's say that we wait till 2022 to take the vote on this, and it doesn't pass for whatever reason. Then, based on 2024, then it sunsets. And the district would cease to exist at that point in time. Because, um, we can't operate off of just the federal revenue alone. Federal revenue also requires matching contributions. So this money pays those matching contributions as well. So it has nothing to do with tax reform. And the other part of your question about reducing it? And, uh, the other part of your question about reducing it is not viable. Uh, because again, seventy percent of our operating, uh, revenue. And in fact, uh, there may be questioning in the future about increasing this tax in order to enhance service levels, more frequency, additional routes, weekend service, expanded demand services, and we have, and then are called out for in our long-range strategic plan. In fact, that twenty-year plan, uh, has a price tag of over a hundred, a hundred million dollars for the next twenty years to enhance service levels in our core town areas. So, the only way to achieve that would be an increase in GRT at some point in the future. But again, uh, our GRTs cannot be put in place by action of our Board if it does require a vote of our constituents in the district.
So what, what would happen if, say, whether taxes are comprehensive, uh, tax reform and GRT rates are stabilized at six percent? Uh, how's that going to affect you? Are you starting to comment to that possibility?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. The, the concern I have about, uh, the state's review or potential actions related to uh, accomplishments of GRT report is the issue regarding pyramid. That would impact everybody here. And, um, I don't know exactly what that would mean to the RTD, but, um, it could have implications of reducing overall GRT, uh, income for us. Just like, it's almost National Laboratories, only, uh, as a nonprofit entity again. That would impact the district, we'd estimate that that would impact us to about a million dollars a year. So, there are, there are potential, um, activities out there that could have implications not only on the RTD, but all cities and counties and special districts throughout the state of Mexico that we have on the GRT. So I think it's something we all have to be vigilant about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Uh, what entities are involved? And the other question is, um, does RTD contribute a certain percentage of revenues to the, uh, um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Meara?
We have fourteen, uh, members, six of them are Tlejos, all four counties, and then there are uh, four cities or towns that are involved. Uh, uh, we take about sixty-five percent of the GRT that's generated on a county-wide basis. And, uh, we distribute that for other regional services or other services that are deemed to be regional and being provided by other transit agencies. And the Railrunner, Kicker, as you mentioned, receives two million dollars a year from the district.
What percentage is?
That's roughly, uh, one way to get it, is worded is. There's a intergovernmental agreement between the RTD and the Rio Metro RTD that operates the Railrunner that calls for fifty percent of the GRT that is generated in San Faye County to be, uh, conveyed to the Rio Metro RTD for the Railrunner operations on an annual basis. And that amounts to two million plus dollars a year. On, uh, on the, in terms of the percentage of the entire GRT, it is, uh, a little bit over thirty percent, somewhere in there. But, but the only GRT that actually goes to a railrunner is the one that's collected and generated in San Faye County. So my GRT from the other counties doesn't go to the, uh, railrunner.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, on the annual report that I gave you guys a week, one or two meetings ago, there's a, uh, pretty extensive explanation of the GRT received and exactly where they spend everything. So, if you have questions on that, you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had seen that, I just wanted to, to know that as well.
Yeah. Anything else, Commissioner?
So, Mr. Chairman, you have to do a public hearing, you have to go through the whole ordinance procedure timeline, uh, so.
It's a resolution, not an ordinance.
Well, it's a, we can, I think there's. I tried to say it was an ordinance, so it's, it's an ordinance, is how it's listed here. Oh, wait. I'm sorry, just going, is it an ordinance or a resolution?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, today what we're talking about is a resolution. Eventually, we'll have to lose ordinance. Uh, the ordinance will come in a year, a couple of years.
And Mr. Chairman O'Donnell? Say, for example, that it failed, what would happen if this, it was that, uh, what is? Services are already currently closed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Meara, if the, uh, we go out and court vote and ask the voters to remove the sunset in twenty eighteen and it fails, uh, the, the tax continues in place. So there's, there's no implication from moving our revenue source. Um, the implications are more of why did it fail? Is there, uh, a lack of understanding about the services the RTD does? Is there a lack of support for the services that are provided in that? Um, or, or did the voters simply not understand the question as you asked them? We have to dissect that. But, uh, a real, uh, requirement occurs if we have to have a vote in twenty twenty-two. When that fails, then, without going to a special election the following year, then that tax ceases to exist in twenty twenty-four. There's no revenues, uh, our, we would have to disband with RTD. Services would probably cease to exist unless each of the members were to pick up those routes and services within their service area. And to do so, they have to, um, find revenue out of their general fund to pay for those, and then, uh, go through the process of getting, uh, matching federal funds as well. It, it'd be, uh, a mess.
At this point, it would be detrimental.
Absolutely, yes.
And Commissioner, Taos County has really good ownership numbers. Anything else, Commissioner?
Can we support it publicly as, I don't think you would. I know in another election, you, you are not allowed to support these causes. Can we support it, um, as a Commissioner?
Um, if anyone had any money to support it, yeah, so we can, uh, speak at the session, but I'm saying, you were asking a question about the price of the actual to distribute to the people, you can speak to that generally, but we can't, there's money to support it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out this timeline, you want this, um, by August, it's, you know, resolution, then ordinance, there's a day, so that's kind of a tight, that's a tight deadline. I mean, it's probably doable, but, you know, that's kind of a fast track here, just to let you know.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, our plan is to do on the twenty-seventh, if the Board agrees, we'll publish the resolution, we'll put out a resolution to publish for the ordinance. And that should keep us right on the timeline of this, if you're thinking. We've been apprised of going back and forth for a few months now with RTD. They talked to us by presenting a little bit of a presentation. Anything else? Um, I've also, we were presented the last board meeting last Friday, um, very nice presentation of their budget. And I have their, their budget book, if any of you would like to review it. We're giving them a copy, but it's, it's certainly, it'll be in the office upstairs, if you'd be able to review it for me, too. Any else, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it's also on our website. Well, there's, uh, so the budget is on there, it's an interactive budget, so it's a tool to, uh, to go through. And, uh, I would, I do appreciate your consideration or request to consider amending, uh, the ordinance. The reason we, we, we ask, uh, that, uh, by August or by the end of August is that if in fact, uh, all four counties do meet that deadline, then we have a series, a series of actions that have to occur after that to eventually reach a point where, uh, we can then come back and request that the counties put on the ballot ballot the question about the sunset. So, there's a lot of work that has to occur, um, once you amend the ordinances for us to appoint them and request the, uh, that, uh, the, the, the election ballot. And you have your own timeframe by which your clerks want, uh, that information, so that you can get those ballots printed with the question on it. And it's a general election, so there's, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of things on that delivery ballot, uh, coming up as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in response to the question, I hope I was clear. I think we advise the ordinance after the campaign were an issue where there's an election. In other words, you know, for you, where citizens are after the campaign, they're gonna take this.
Or?
Yeah, or, it's, um, in a spending category. And I'll be glad to provide some material when we bring the message, uh, publish the ordinance for you on, um, elections and, um, all, Commissioner.
All right. Actually, may I? Do you guys have a ticket for that? Okay, Item Seven, under contract agreements, our people's RPTs bid. Item A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Order for ITV Twenty Seventeen dash zero-two A for construction of the San Josuo Fire Station. Ms. Field.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chairman. Um, before I have placed a packet with, uh, portion of the RPT, the RPT itself had a lot of specifications, which equals about over three hundred pages, so, but I put in the packet, it was basically the bid packet itself. Um, after, uh, this is our second application that we have listed as one due to the application, it came overruled, so therefore, all bids were rejected. Um, the staff recommendation, um, for, um, invitation to bid two thousand seventeen oh two eighty for the construction of the San Josuo Fire Station, we are asking based on the lowest price and with the deductible alternate one price to be awarded to Four Eight's Contractors Incorporated. Um, in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And this is exclusive of the next four GRT.
Commissioner.
Motion approved, on second, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve a word for ITV Twenty Seventeen dash zero-two A for construction of the San Josuo Fire Station. Discussion? Hearing them, Court Call Room.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geiger?
Yes.
Chairman Denver?
Yes. Item B, this is the Millsus Show here for a little bit, something.
Unfortunately.
Excuse me, we have a question behind you.
Yes, answer them. Uh, I'm fired to you for the San Josuo Fire Department. And, uh, I just wanted to, 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 to dig here a little bit. Um, really appreciated your help and support for the community of San Josuo and the Greater San Francisco Fire Department. And, uh, it's finally, um, cash out way for, for the community, this will cost us. We have been waiting for about four and a half years for a fire station. And we really appreciate, um, the fact that you have approved this, uh, this bid. And, um, I just, I want to say this, uh, to you, uh, thank you very much.
No, sir, we thank you. Thank you very much for helping guys, I'll do.
Thank you.
Item B is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Award for ITV Twenty Seventeen dash zero-three for road and construction materials. Ms. Field.
Um, before in the packet, uh, you have a copy of the actual, um, invitation to bid the lowest construction materials as well as the bid tabulation. We received two responses, one from NTC and upgraded. And the other one was from Northern Mountain Constructors and upgraded. Based on the geographical area, um, in terms of how the bid laid out and, and in terms of the pricing with the bid tabulation, I am, um, staff is recommending, um, based on the lowest price within the geographical area to do a multi-source award to both parties, which is the Mexico, uh, I mean, Northern Mountain Constructors and NTC. Um, NTC will be awarded the areas in which they, uh, uh, actually got the lowest price, which impacts the area from Westa all the way to Amaria. So that actually saves public works money in coming back and forth, tying in the credit money as well as labor in hauling materials from Taos to parts of Amaria, posting on those areas, so. Um, after looking at the whole picture, with the public works at the razor, as well as, uh, Mr. Brent Todd, you know, um, it was determined that offers of sort would be in the disinterest of Taos County at this point in time.
Thank you for that admission, that was, that was sound, thank you. Commissioners.
Motion approved?
Second.
Second with discussion.
Okay, right, so motion and a second to award ITV Twenty Seventeen dash zero-three for road and construction materials. Commissioner O'Donnell?
So, some of these documents are blank that are submitted here. I'm just curious, uh, and, and then is this as needed, so there's no, what's the contract amount and limit on both of these?
Uh, there will be a contract limit amount, the areas that are blank are the areas in which that contractor did not propose a bid for those materials, due to they do not offer those type of materials. So that's why you see it where it's blank on there.
Okay, and also, like, you've got campaign contribution forms that are blank.
But that's just the bid packet itself, in terms of what was present online. Those aren't the official, um, documents that were submitted in. All documents that were submitted in by the vendors were all signed, and you have the original packets upstairs, if you have them.
I'm just, okay, in the future, I'm wondering if you might be able to add, um, when it just shows, like, like a legal, like a copy of a legal ad, like, planning this, when you have papers and all that.
But then the bid packet that I, or the bid packet I had presented to you in there is a legal advertisement. And this advertisement actually was published on April twenty-seventh. And all responses were due by May eighth at two P M here at the Taos County Administration Office. You're interested in?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing your, your, your proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, my district appreciates that very much.
You're welcome. A lot of work done.
Yeah, we can. Hearing no further, discussion, Court Call Room.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geiger?
Yes.
Chairman Denver?
Yes. Item, why, how is that a follow-down?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Item C is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Order by Three Twenty Seventeen dash zero-four for a used utility vehicle with, uh, bucket equipment. Ms. Field.
Um, this is the first publication for this bid, this bid was placed, um, in to see, we were able to find a used vehicle with, um, with bucket equipment to utilize in the public works department um, for different various projects, including treatment, uh, within the county maintain notes. We received only one response to this bid, and it was very responsive, it is a decree, then complete and on time. And based on the lowest price, staff recommends to award, uh, ITV Two Thousand Seventeen oh four for the used vehicle to Mr. Luis Geiger, um, in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred.
Motion approved?
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the award of ITV Twenty Seventeen dash zero-four for a used utility vehicle with bucket. Discussion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Again, some of, you just got blank documents, I mean, is it possible to show their responses on their campaign contributions and, um?
What I provide is, is a blank document, which is the actual bid packet that was placed out there, white on the web. And if you notice, the response, which is the bid form, the bid proposal form, which was given by Mr. Geiger, and behind it is the actual specifications he gave us on the vehicle. And so, that is the response we received back, um, which I didn't. And so that is the response we received back, um, which I didn't include the copies of the contribution form, which he does have signed his words, he's ineligible for new resident veteran because he actually indicated that and signed that form as well.
He is?
Yes.
He was, okay. And then I see that the mileage not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand. This stuff happens, this particular vehicle is a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Um, which I find kinda curious. Um, has, uh, the road department inspected this vehicle?
Uh, yes, they've seen photos and actually got to see it, but based on state statute that we do have in place, um, the person who does sell any used vehicle based on section thirty-two dash one dash one fifty-five, they are required to give a written ninety day warranty after the date of delivery and an independent, which is a working letter by certified mechanic or appraiser when the vehicle is actually delivered to Taos County. And this is required by the state.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I wonder if Brian go and run it, turn it on, check everything.
Yes, he did. But even if Brian saw it, the vendor or the person who's selling us this vehicle still has to provide a certified, um, letter from certified mechanic or appraiser based on the vehicle, it's in good review condition, it's warranty for ninety days once we are received of this vehicle.
And who decided to do this, I'm curious?
Uh, public works, they've been looking for a truck or a vehicle for a while. Um, it's something that's in there because they don't have access to actually address certain issues with dead trees and stuff out there, so this is something that they didn't look natural on.
What is the vehicle cost?
Uh, probably over the hundred thousands. Uh, easy, just because of the bucket equipment itself, it's very, very expensive. Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do have a motion and a second, per call rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhurst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Palmer.
Yes, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm.
And finally, in this section, Ms. Field, this is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of award by ITV twenty seventeen dash zero five substance abuse or alcohol detoxification rehabilitation services for Taos County.
Um, this is our first publication for this RFP. Uh, we received one response, um, in a ten hour, it was responsive. The evaluation committee evaluated the packet and deemed that the interview was necessary to, um, gather more information, um, from the vendor who was operating this initiative. Um, I did attach a evaluation summary report, um, to this packet, and in there is actually a scoring sheet as well, I mean, the scoring as well for each area in which is, uh, evaluated. Based on the review of this RFP, the evaluation committee recommends to award RFP two thousand seventeen oh five for substance abuse and/or alcohol detoxification rehabilitation services for Taos County to inside out, subject to negotiation and initially group contractors that will. If there's any questions, from the ones that you have on this town, I'd love to answer any questions if you're interested in that.
Make a motion.
Yeah, a motion.
Second.
And a second.
Just a quick question.
To approve the award of RFP twenty seventeen dash zero five substance abuse and/or alcohol detoxification rehabilitation services for Taos County, Commissioner Blank, a one.
Thank you, Chairman, um, what, how much are they asking for? I, I understand it's subject to negotiation, I mean, I just curious enough.
At least they were asking for sixty thousand dollars for this particular project.
And can you tell us a little bit more about, uh, the project itself?
The project itself would be a local unit that would go around all the rural areas and then, um, anyone anonymous, if they actually approach, um, talking totally, they would get, um, like, bribes and stuff done. It's my understanding that the sixty thousand dollars that they're wanting to utilize in this project was for the physicians and possibly the RAs that would be traveling within that local unit to help individuals who are trying to detox or hopefully get help for alcoholism and so forth.
And what, what is the proposal in terms of the operation of the unit? Daily, hours, that kind of thing?
Um, Chairman, Commissioner, um, so this unit with its own bonus, it's called the Mobile Bonus Center, and it would travel to different areas of Cunyasco and each, um, Cuesta, but each area would have a designated date, so let's just say Wednesday, they would be in Cunyasco, Tuesday, then it'd be in, um, Cuesta, um, Thursdays, they'd be in, um, T P. So each area would have a designated date.
And, and is it, uh, is the plan for seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, or what's the, uh?
Um, I believe the plan is five days, maybe to Friday.
On what hours?
Um, two.
Hour, uh, hours per?
Hours, um, I would say that probably from nine to three, I mean, because you have to get travel time. Um, but they have not designated the hours. The sixty thousand is clearly for salary. Uh, but I do wanna indicate that they have been granted a hundred thousand from V H S B to distribute, um, meloxone, and also they've been granted a hundred thousand from Lina, um, to provide additional services. Um, and on this unit, um, they will be doing, uh, telehealth as well, once that's set up. Currently in our office, now that they're doing telehealth, it will be at Sunday last week.
And the proposal is for a one-year contract?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I think this is a great move. What the state wants are these mobile crisis units. I need it up in Cunyasco, like, it reports to people whose husband died of an O D and a particular lady is still strung out, and she doesn't have a working vehicle, and she lives in a dump, and jet your light to have somebody reach out to these kind of people up there because they can't make it down here, so I appreciate that. And then, uh, when you, when you make these, um, are, do people, um, give you their proposal and the amount? Or do you tell them, this is the amount, we have, work with it? I, I'm just wondering how, uh, how these people know how to bid on something?
Um, usually an amount is given, because obviously price isn't a true driving factor in this particular RFP. They give us kind of like their wish amount. What they, um, but they justify it within their packet in terms of how they come out with that dollar amount in terms of what they're asking. It is clear in the packet that they may not get the full amount. Um, this is not a guarantee this funding is gonna be available the following year. It's not like a bridge that they can depend on, it could be a one type thing. So they are fully aware, but, you know, they advocate for it, especially during an interview in terms of how they give us more detail in, in how they came out with that dollar amount. We did ask them to bring detail in terms of that and how they broke it out and how they determined they needed sixty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand or whatever amount they, they proposed within their packet.
And what's the status of their banner, we gave them a blue bus banner?
Um, so, uh, Chairman, Commissioner, um, my understanding is that they're in negotiation in, uh, purchasing the trailer that actually, that has, um, a bathroom, um, to give additional services.
You asked for that?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
That's all. So, Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I just wanted to, um, remind you that the RTB wasn't able to give them the bus directly, um, due to anti-agamation, and because the county, Riverdale County had made a request prior to Taos County that in particular, we need to riverdale county, um, from the RTB. That's why we ended up giving them the bus as they had requested, because it would have had to go through the county if they would have had an anti-agamation issue.
And Commissioner, I, I reviewed the buses that are available in the middle or in mechanically sound shape that the weakness needs.
So why didn't we ever get it and we?
They requested first.
Oh, okay, alright.
Anything else, Commissioner? Okay, I do have a motion and a second, per call rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhurst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos. Chairman Palmer.
Yes. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances. Also, thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you.
Your very hard work during this time of year, I really appreciate it.
See, we want to be twenty seventh again with all these contracts.
Alright. Okay, under resolutions and ordinances, item eight eight is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight, resolution imposing an avalanche act for the benefit of a vital water sanitation district.
Mr. Chairman, um, I do believe we have, um, representative from the staff in the audience to ask her any question. Typically, this is a resolution you guys see every year about this time, authorizing the avalanche tax, taxing the board.
Do we have any questions? This is something that we do pretty much, she's available if we do, but.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner, I wish I had a little, just a quick moment. Inside the board member of the life.
Um, I, this, uh, government, uh, talks strictly about, um, financial independence, so I don't think you have to recuse, but I think I recommend it because of the perception.
Okay, come on. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Motion approved, Chairman.
Yeah, I have a motion, second. And a second to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight, resolution imposing an avalanche act for the benefit of a vital water sanitation, per call rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'll recuse myself.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhurst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Palmer.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I was, I believe.
I know.
Okay, item B is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine. This is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County acting in its capacity as the Taos County Board of Finance, repealing resolution twenty fifteen dash six, the existing investment policy and adopting the new investment policy, Mr. Cordos.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you may recall, a few months ago, we decided to do some investments, um, a ladder portfolio of CDs, I asked the commission at that time on behalf of the chairman to be able to invest outside of Taos County and to invest in terms longer than one year. The changes to this resolution are just reflecting that request so that it's actually documented in the resolution that it's okay to do those two, um, those two actions.
Motion approved, Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm just having a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County acting in its capacity as the Taos County Board of Finance, repealing resolution twenty fifteen dash six, existing investment policy and adopting the new investment policy, per call rule.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Donnell, I apologize.
Um, the, um, the Investment Committee composure, um, is that how it currently read? Because I see, I thought one of our commissioners was a member of that committee, but according to the, um, it is not, is not included, a commission member. Is that, is that, has that changed?
I was asked to just attend the meetings, I have no voting power or, um, or anything, it's informational for me. Ms. Field.
Uh, that is correct. It's, um, it's my invitation, representing the, the Board of Finance actually, so that you're just aware, and it's a courtesy. Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, further discussion. Sorry, I had, I had, I had a, a commissioner, per call rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes, Commissioner Blackenhurst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Palmer.
And, Commissioner, just?
Yes.
Uh, just one comment. And, um, uh, we have put this on the agenda or paperwork, I believe in my, in the, um, attorneys, um, the attorneys to do, that way it automatically, um, renewed every single. And, um, uh, it's easier for them to do on their side, but, um, we will review it and look at it and, uh, that way it's all, uh, we done, and it's brought into the board for us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to item C, this is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty. This is a resolution adopting Taos County Adult Attention Center Commissioners' annual operation review checklist. Um, this will be presented by Commissioner O'Donnell and Mr. Cordos.
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, this is basically the checklist that we've been providing to us from it, and we see, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell is kind of taking the charge for permission on getting this adopted so that in our next annual, um, review of the attention center, we're gonna have one, uh, one checklist that is uniform and everybody should fill out, and we'll have the company considered for it.
And this will help Mr. Bates and his accreditation, uh, so this is approved by the accreditation board?
Yes, uh, this is an important step to getting through that accreditation, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is there a, uh, a set of timeline, is when you wanna accomplish this?
Mr. Chairman, there's not, it's not dictated by statute when you guys should do it. We did it a few years ago in October, and we've kind of been trying to keep with that duty, but I think, um, the board can suggest a different time if they would like to, we just gotta get it done each year. Um, and I think we've kind of been trying to do it on a calendar year.
But as far as the accreditation, Mr. O'Donnell, is what you're?
They told me when I asked at the multiline meeting, um, we're still in the baby step stage, so it's probably beginning within the next eighteen months, as I guessed.
And how long? They've really been talking about this with a while.
And I was kind of like pushing him to, let's do what we can to help Mr. Bates to get this going. I thought we can have it started this summer, and, and the accreditation board said that there's some training and, and some steps that they wanna make sure, because their goal is to get people to, to, through the process. So they felt he still needed a little bit more time.
And, Mr. Chairman?
But I'll, I'll ask again, we have a meeting during the conference, and I'll.
Okay, we're. If we could get a time line, or that would be really, really cool.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, big step is adopting the attention policies. Those new policies will really get us moving along on the timeline, so, um, we hope we really soon, um, maybe the next meeting or sometime in July, we'll get those adopted, which will then really kick off the ability to get that accreditation. But we practiced a lot of things that changed over there, we are maybe moving in that direction. And IMC's been a couple, um, they're actually coming again in July, their next annual inspection, and the last annual inspection was a whole different facility, we had seen the foundation.
Commissioner O'Donnell, what I, I think might be beneficial is if we ask the, uh, the people that are in charge of IMC and accreditation, can they get a proper, a short presentation, so we know what we're looking at also. Do you agree?
I agree.
Okay, I'll work on setting the, Commissioner Blackenhurst.
I was gonna suggest that also, but I think there's only like one or two, uh, attention centers. Last time I asked, there was only a couple that I made it through, so it's a, it's a rigorous process.
They told us a number, I think it is more of a, I mean.
It's a handful of very complicated, um, yes, it is a very rigorous process, it certainly takes a while, and, um, once you get it, then you take it, so it takes a lot of work to keep up with it too.
And, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we approved the checklist at our, our previous meeting, this resolution is solidified, I said.
Thank you, Commissioner, for all your work on this, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for your work.
I told you, I can get an inside look at the deal really, really easy.
Anytime.
Eighty percent we can.
Anytime.
Alright.
I can sleep on the floor.
Alright, per call rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhurst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Palmer.
Yes. Item D is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-one, resolution repealing and replacing Taos County Resolution, uh, two thousand five dash thirteen, establishing the Local Emergency Planning Committee Biops. This will be presented by our O E M directors, Mr. Bobby Bussel. Hey, Bob.
My name is Chairman, President, Commissioner, Mr. Cordos, it's Major. Um, you're gonna need a request of approval on the resolution for L U P C, though we were just planning to make the biops. These biops have been revised by our L U P C committee. Taos County Labor Department has reviewed them and approved them as well. Um, the resolution has been prepared by the, as well. Um, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, Tom Miller, has approved these biops. And we have been all required advertisements per the biops. These advertisements went on our Taos County website and our L U P C Facebook page. There have only been minor changes to the bylaws, re-rating grammar, punctuation. And our Labor Department has added an informational coordinator to Article 3 Officer PD's mentions in terms, which was suggested from the EPA's LUPC bylaws as of June 2014. Is there any questions?
Um, Mr. I, I do have a question.
Would you like to make a motion first and interrupt the discussion?
Sure, I make a motion that we approve the LUPC, um, resolution.
Oh, do it in seconds, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I do have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-31, which replaces Taos County Resolution 20, um, 2005-13, which established the local emergency planning committee bylaws. So I have a motion and a second discussion, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Just a quick question. Um, Mr. Sarah, on my packet, it's page 215. Uh, it cites a May 11th, 2017 meeting. And I'm wondering, should that be changed to today's date? Uh, it is now therefore being resolved by the government body, County of Taos, New Mexico, a bill to be regular meeting held on May 11th. Shall we just, do we need to change that to today's date?
Um, Mr. Commissioner O'Donnell. Uh, we can just amend the motion to adopt the resolution with a change in mandate.
Yes.
That's a change, so I think that's fine.
Okay, you can add an amendment to include the date.
Okay, another second, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell amended her previous motion to reflect today's date in the, uh, therefore being resolved section of the resolution and Commissioner O'Donnell accepted the amendment. Um, hold on. Sorry. Second. Okay. All right. Then we continue with discussion. I was wondering if we had to vote on the amendment.
We normally should amend the amendment first and then.
So we, we need to vote to, on the amended, the amendment to the original motion and say. Call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Penbro.
Yes. Okay, now moving back to the, to the amended motion, which corrected the date. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Do you have questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Now further, third call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Penbro.
Yes. Bobby, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
And the job of our community version, Robert, it is, so we're super excited.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item E is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of Resolution 2017-32. A resolution adopting the implementation of an integrated pest management policy governing the use of pesticides, herbicides, and pesticides. This will be presented by Mrs. Susan Baker, but I would ask that we recognize Councilman Kim Tauran is in the, uh, audience with us. He has been the chairperson of the committee that's been meeting on this. And, um, Councilman, would you please stand and introduce any of your committee members that are here today?
Thank you, Chairman Penbro. Sean Walker with Real Grand Aces, one of the members. Julie Shikko, partner teacher here in Taos, one of the members, of course yourself, Mr. O'Donnell. Uh, I don't see Councilor Reddick's here. And there had been one or two people that stopped in and asked for, uh, Chris Tauran.
Tony has been very.
Tony, one of the, some of your sessions to, yes.
All right, Mr. Baker.
This resolution mirrors a resolution recently adopted by the town of Taos and has an identical policy attached. This, um, procedure is to work with, uh, the county-owned and managed properties to ensure alternatives to pesticides, pesticides, and other more toxic means of controlling pests, including weeds. And it emphasizes protection measures when employees are applying pesticides. It emphasizes signage to let the public know that an area has been sprayed. And it's a starting point. I think the way the resolution is written encourages further dialogue with other governments, including the local pueblo communities, to enhance our use of alternative measures to more toxic approaches, um, that are presented by pesticides. You know, this is a tough area because there's still a lot of state and, um, federal regulation, uh, that's kind of in flux. I mean, certain states like California have actually gone as far as banning or beginning to ban, um, certain kinds of herbicides and pesticides. And at this point, you know, we don't want to violate any state ad laws or regulations, but at the same time, we're promoting this idea of starting with the county first and working collaboratively with other communities to educate and, um, start to work towards using less invasive measures. And if the committee has any comments, we'd quite appreciate it.
Councilman, any additional information you feel we for the motion?
Good morning. It's preceded by, thank you, Chairman Penbro, Commissioners, Attorney Cordos, Attorney Baker. Uh, this is kind of a, a good example of really decent collaborative effort. Could always be better, but we're making headway. Um, I feel that I speak for the committee, although we didn't all receive copies of the resolution and the proposed policy ordinance until last night. At least I didn't. Um, and so we've not had a lot of time to review it, but in reviewing it into the evening last night, um, as you look at the proposed policies, uh, Section A, the purpose and findings, be the Taos County's IPM or Integrated Pest Management Policy. We've got a really solid match with the town. So we've created that seamless regional until you finish your scoping effort with Peniasco and Apuebla and so on. Uh, we've got a pretty good effort going here. Where we differentiate is in signage. Uh, your proposed signage, part of this ordinance, Section C, is a paragraph. Uh, the proposed policy starts off stating that Taos County will make all reasonable efforts to post signage where there has been it. And I would submit to you, Chairman and Commissioners, that that's putting the curve before the whole course. We have chemically sensitive people who need to be aware prior to spring, not after spring, not during spring. That being said, we have some discrepancies in Section C. Uh, first of all, the committee felt that, uh, the town's reference to appropriate labeling in this section is an imperative. The back of the pesticide bottle or container or what have you is the law. And it will state what you need to do and under what conditions you can use this during. And so we felt that it was important to reiterate that. However, that's a mulberry, not a mountain. Um, the mountains are these items for your consideration. The town is requiring a one-day signage posted prior to spring for the utilization of pesticide. The town's statute ordinance, rather, reads that that signage then will stay up five to seven days post-spring. And again, this is out of respect for those elders, those youngsters who have allergies or have medical conditions that they need to be aware of. The second major issue, uh, discrepancy between the town and county is that we are requiring signage in front of all entry points. So as I, if you were spraying or using a substance in the detention center, you'd want to have a sign preferably in Spanish and English in front of those entrances into the building so that people were aware that something was going on inside the building. And if they do have some kind of, uh, chemical sensitivity, they can, uh, gain entry or, or come over here and make a phone call over there. That kind of thing. The idea is they can take proactive measures to protect themselves. Um, a, you should be aware, this is just a mulberry, but the town is requiring that these signs be readable. They need to be campaign-type poster signs. What, eighteen inches, about twenty-four, something like that. Um, the other concern that the committee has was at our last, um, public hearing, I think it was in front of this body, uh, Commissioners voiced a couple of concerns that weren't addressed. Uh, the first concern that was brought up at that meeting that hasn't been addressed yet is the wearing of appropriate clothing. Now, I haven't personally gone out and checked the labeling on pesticides. I'm sure there's a reference to using masks and gloves, but I don't know about total body clothing. I haven't investigated that part. That is a concern. It may already have been dealt with with the appropriate labeling. And by the way, we're still waiting to hear from Bonnie Rabie of, of the New Mexico Extension Service on our QR labeling so that Sean Walker then can organize the retailers here in town to begin consulting with all of their customers about the appropriate use of pesticides. Um, the commission at that time made a recommendation and, uh, at that time that signage be posted three days prior to, to spring or utilizing, um, versus the town's one day. Now, the three day is not addressed in this Section C. Section C in the county's proposal is just that one-sentence paragraph. Uh, and finally, the commission at that time, um, had, uh, bandied about the idea of putting a disclaimer with the signage. And I'm not very sure how that would work. Uh, it could probably be something like, you know, enter at your own risk or I, I don't know, you know. Um, I'm not a lawyer, Susan can handle that. So, um, really what's happening here in this paragraph is we're lacking specificity. The committee feels that it's an imperative to have appropriate signage and that is, uh, the biggest point of separation between town and county. Town wants strict adherence to signage. County's saying, well, we're going to sign up, you know, after the spring. So for your consideration and discussion, I don't know if any, Julie took time out of her business and Sean, you want to add? Anything, Sean, that I covered pretty well, Julie?
I'd like to say one thing about Sean. I, I looked through yourself, one of your employees took me through everything the other day. I was looking at it. Majority of the products I saw already have a QR label on the container. Which I know that is a, that is the, uh, manufacturer or vendor's QR code. What we're, what we're seeking is something from the state, which gives not just Scott's brand or, uh, Bayer brand or whatever, uh, that particular agency or that particular company wants to share. We want to have something that's regulated, something that's offered by the state. That's a general QR code where you can go and say, um, this is my problem. I have a particular insect or I have, uh, this particular weed. And it will give you the safest recommendation, not based on a company's bias. You want to use Scott's, you want to use Scott's, you want to use Scott's. Uh, we want to have something that is, uh, generic from the state that, that says, these are your options, okay? And it, it may go across multi-companies and it should go across multiple, multiple companies so that there's not, um, any bias in the suggestion. And that's what we're trying to implement at the store level. Um, we're hoping to get, that's, that's voluntary, I should say also. It's not part of this resolution. Uh, what I'm hoping to do is, once we implement that, I can go to the other retailers in town and ask them to volunteer voluntarily, uh, post those codes in their establishments near the chemical lot so that our consumers are better educated before they purchase. Um, and he mentioned, I just wanted to touch on this. He mentioned the, uh, PDE, the Personal Protective Equipment labeling on the front of it. That does not change. Um, as, as a government entity, you will be, um, using licensed contractors or licensed employees to apply these chemicals, um, these herbicides, all, all pesticides. Um, so they will be following that way. That's the law, they have to follow that way. We included that in the town's, um, IPM in the signage portion just to remind everyone that that is already in place and they will be following that. What we wanted to do with the signage portion is alert the general public going into these areas, um, what the dangers might be, um, what chemical is being used so that they have a, uh, a sign before they enter, before they're, uh, before they come in contact with any of the chemicals or herbicides or pesticides being used so they can make a decision whether to enter that zone or do a little bit more research. Continue to read the sign, what's necessary to enter this thing. Um, there, one of the other things that wasn't addressed in this one that I saw, um, with regards to signage was a re-entry interval. And, uh, that's very important because if you just post a sign, hey, we're going to spray this, but the label on the container says that there's a minimum re-entry interval. That means that no one should be walking in that grass or entering that room for a particular specimen or time. And, uh, I would recommend that that be added in there, that, that if there is an order, not all chemicals require that, but if there is one on the label, that be posted. Because you have other employees that didn't read the label before it was applied that may need to stay out of that area and otherwise they won't know that. Um, and I would also say, if, if the drought is going to be modified, oh, um, I think on page one, and bring my notes up here. Uh, one of, on one portion, it says, I and he instead of I, you know, to be consistent, we want to keep that, uh, the same. It's on, uh, it's number three, bullet number three. It's the first motion, you know, part of the resolution. Um, that, and that's on your drought. And then, uh, that, that is added to the, um, IPM policy attachment A that you have here. And then attachment A, um, there was one word, an issue, I think issues has been used. Issue should probably be changed just for addition or re-reading. Um, but, uh, you have any question to that?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Uh, Mr. Councilman Hahn. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I do concur that, um, C needs some work regarding specificity. I, I do agree it should be at least a three-day posting beforehand. And all those things you mentioned in Spanish, the re-entry of the rooms, um, making sure our staff wear protective clothing as outlined. But I would also like to add to that section, um, storage, that these chemicals be stored in a locked area. Uh, we had some issue a while ago where five down thing of pesticide disappeared. I don't know if they found it, but I think it's important that we store these in a contained area um, so no one else can get their hands on them. So, thank you for your work. And, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, if it's okay, I think we need to postpone a vote on this until the next meetings where these issues that have been talked about, um, are ironed out and brought back.
Is that in the forward motion?
Yes, it is. Uh, I make a motion that we postpone to the next meeting. Item.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and second that motion, which I too would like to thank the Councilman Hahn for taking the sound and to the rest of the committee as well.
Let me restate the motion. The motion is to postpone to a specific date. Item eight E. And that specific date as requested by Commissioner O'Donnell and seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell will be June 27th during the regular meeting of the Taos County Commission. Any other discussion? Uh, Vice Chair Gago.
Chair, um, you additioned, uh, uh, further review of the resolution. Mr. Hahn, um, how much input has the public works or facilities maintenance crew from Taos and the county had to, to understand what the implementations are going to be? You know, what kind of man hours, times are going to take, form staff to put signs up, take them down, put them up, take them down, all, all that kind of stuff. So I think that's part of what we need to continue to understand is what, what we're dealing with when it comes into running this, these, um, these chemicals out there. How many man hours and we've got to dedicate that as well to the factor of what's going to be going on in the area. So I think we wish to do that as well in the next couple of weeks by having testing. And have there as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, I'll stop.
Alstel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Commissioner Gagos. We have not done a time analysis. We have incorporated our facilities director and his staff into the discussions. And they're amenable to it. But we haven't asked that question. How much time is this going to take? What's our dollar projections here? I can just tell you that staff at the town is supportive of this and sees even a short staff as we are in almost every department, they will make it so. Mr. Blackmore.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, I can just notice that we can consult with public works and get back on that information. With regard to the 8x14 signs, I wonder if the little flags have been acceptable to the town council? I've seen little flags, little kind of like skull and crosspins and then usually yellow or red. And I think they're usually recommended. I know they were one time. And you just put them in the area and it was sprayed.
Sounds like fun, but I haven't seen...
Okay, there are these little tiny flags.
I need one last from my agenda.
Vice Chair, just another, and maybe part of the legal process, but how liable would we be if we have to not put signs up in some way that is safe or something to have a tree? How much are we going to be covered with that?
Policy for the front of town's perspective, it's a policy that we must adhere to. And if we don't, then we are liable. Mr. Lieutenant Chicago. Commissioner Blackmore.
Thanks, Chairman. No, I just wanted to say that I agree we should flush out C and include murders prior to the spraying. Since I think we're leaving the discussion out now, but Susan may want to refer to take the time from now on the next meeting.
Yes, and we are more closely. It sounds like the town's policy around some...
But adding the re-entry policy, which requires that the town implement for the neighbors. Thank you for that suggestion. I think that's important.
Procedurally, Mr. Philke, a motion and a second is already made unless the commission have a specific question for you of the common period that's in within this item.
Comment on this issue.
I had a question, Mr. Shawna, I'm sorry.
Oh, we already have a motion and a second. So, it's now up to this line. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes. Let's say we're spraying to kill ants in a building. Can you give me an idea of what that re-entry period looks like? Can you just maybe specify the particular? I'm just curious, because you did say there is... We're talking just a couple of hours? We're talking eight hours? What kind of re-entry?
Is that contained on the label of the... It is. So, every chemical with... If you're spraying for ants, I've never seen an ant spray that requires a re-entry interval. It's not toxic enough to require that. There are some things, perhaps a blood bomb. I'd have to look, you know? So, if you set off on this thing, it says, leave, do not re-enter for eight hours, four hours, whatever it is. Every label will indicate a safety parameters for that particular use and the directions for safe use of that chemical. And I don't... My recommendation is not to get bogged down in this resolution in the specifics of actual chemicals. Those are already being addressed at the federal and state level for your licensed applicator. What we want to do is make sure that the general public, who didn't have any prior knowledge that this chemical was being applied or this pest was being controlled, we make them aware so that they're not inadvertently made sick or become in contact with a toxic substance. Also, the clarity of this resolution, just to clarify, it's really to help avoid the use of toxic chemicals and use them as a last resort. We want the IPM, it's an integrated pest management program, identify the pest and see if you can live with it. Identify the pest and see what's the safest way to deal with it if you have to deal with it. Can it become a can without a chemical? And then, as a last resort, we use a pesticide, which is regulated. We follow the legal application of that chosen pesticide by a licensed applicator. What this does is, if we get to that point, we sign, we identify what we're using, and communicate that to the public so that they're aware.
All right. So, what I hear you saying is the re-entry would depend on the type of chemical used? And we could do kind of a vague language about re-entry based on...
Yeah, it would be generic language.
Generic language.
Stating that we are going to conform to the label.
The label re-entry. Okay, got it.
And then you post it, and you recommend it, aren't you?
Mr. Blackmore.
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, we completely, let's not get into weeds on how we're going to address people and apply it and whatnot. You know, we can read the labels. Let's do the overall resolution. We protect the public and minimize the use of these things. Thank you very much for that suggestion.
So, yes or no, are these illegal?
Are these illegal?
Simply yes or no, are these illegal?
Are pesticides illegal? No.
Go ahead.
Just one other example, if I could. On 4.4, the town mentions citizens being able to access the list of pesticides that the town is using. We're doing that through the clerk's office. Just, that's the last point of divergence. So, can or could post somewhere any pesticides being used so that citizens can access that information? Should they have been insulted and need to counteract it? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. I was curious about what Mr. Philke was going to say.
Okay, there we go. Now we got, come forward, Mr. Philke. Thank you. Proceed with that.
I just went out. I was a little confused, a little concerned about confusion between herbicides and pesticides as far as other people getting asked to it. The pesticides are in the ground. And I've used cases and I've applied cases and cases of it. The manufacturer recommends using gloves. The max at the egg center, he does it standing up. I would be on my knees applying it with bare hands. And I didn't, I never get anything through osmosis. The only thing is the product gets set off by moisture. You don't do it with wet hands. Because as soon as it starts, it gets moisture in the ground and turns into phosphine gas. But on proper applications, the hole is closed and there's no access to the outside. And people have asked me, well, what if my dog or my cat? They would have to open the hole back up and just huff and puff forever. So, I don't see any necessary issue. And for the councilman, clothes, there's no issue with clothes. The main issue on applying it, and whether you want to wear a mask or not and whether that's effective or not, the main thing is to be downwind or to keep the, to keep the open container of the product downwind. And if you can smell it, you move it somewhere else. But it's only inhaling that's the danger. But herbicides, that's a huge issue for me. I can't even go through some of these places and smell them. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philke. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Chairman and commissioners, I would like the opportunity to meet with Councilman Hahn and the committee and rework this with your permission. They have a lot of good information that I think could be helpful. And maybe we want to even address what that decides now that that's been brought up. With carried out poisons, there are gases. And they can't, I got a child in New York and died in the last couple of years from these gases. So, maybe we want to give that...
A motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
And Mr. Chairman, an individual committed suicide in the town's family years ago.
Allegedly.
After seeing that sign that Mr. Philke had, Councilman, maybe the town and the county can make signs on that same material there. It won't be that expensive. And people can come here and get them, go to town hall and get them, or something like that to... So, the signs are consistent because what's assigned to me may not be assigned to someone else. I think somebody's got it down here. Yeah, you know, but a little bit bigger. But certainly, somebody has. There you go. Show my age, Carol Merrill is now modeling. But one of them. Let's take a deal. So, if we made a consistent sign that's visible and the town's written, printed it, people would see that sign means exactly what you're trying to achieve. And it would be a uniform. And that people can voluntarily do not, I mean, out in their, in their own stuff. So, it's easy for people to recognize that's what it is. So, maybe we, I don't think that cost is going to be prohibitive. So, does that, if that makes sense, why don't you consider that as well, Councilman?
Do you want to say?
No, Mr. Philke.
No, sure. No, I'll do it.
Darren, do you want to say?
No.
You don't want it, it's a label or not, so. All right. So, to restate the motion, is there any other discussion, commissioners? To restate the motion, there is a motion to discuss possible approval of Resolution 2017-32, which is a resolution adopting implementation in the integrated pest management policy governing the use of pesticides, herbicides, and pesticides. And I think that should be for Tous County in the next posting of this to the June 27 meeting. That was moved by Commissioner O'Donnell and seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Clerk of Colorado.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blackmore.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Hahn.
Yes. Thank you all.
Chairman, I make a motion for a five-minute break.
Make it eight minutes and I'll actually vote for it.
Eight minutes.
All right. Make a motion and a second. So, we can take an eight-minute break. Clerk of Colorado.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell. Yes, Mr. Blackmore.
Yes.
Mr. Gagos. Chairman Hahn.
Okay. I apologize for the delay. The loss of the complex did mean a lot of news. So, thank you all for being patient. We're moving on to item nine, which is a motion to come back into session.
So. Second.
Motion and second. Clerk of Colorado.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell. Yes. Mr. Blackmore.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Hahn.
Yes. Okay. Now, we move on to item nine, Department of Matters. Item A is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of lodgers' tax or grant recommendations. This will be presented by our deputy clerk, Mr. Valer Hugo. And I want the commission to know that we do have members of the committee that we appointed in attendance.
Yes.
We have a few to mark to this. And in that, I have a couple of the members here present who all have questions. So, today we have 29 organizations that requested grants from the lodger tax. On your screen, you'll see I put a couple years of the, from '16, '17, and this year, so you can compare the seat. We have $100,000 that was available this year. If you have any questions, you let me know.
Pleasure. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I have a motion. Second and a second. We're supposed to approve the lodger's tax or grant recommendations as presented. Vice Chair Gagos. Sorry, I forgot my name. Hold on a second.
Mr. Philke. Number 28, New Costilla, La Cota Coa. They are well-known throughout the country as one of the destination locations for outdoor recreation, camping, fishing, all the things that go on with that. That is vital for that community to continue to attract visitors. These visitors do stop in all the local communities from Tous, Red River, Costa, even into that small community in Costilla, right? And I do understand when the lodger tax is supposed to be implemented. I just feel that, you know, they can contribute in many other ways, not into the lodging aspects of it, but they do contribute with some other businesses that provide those receipts to the area. This is one thing that I would hope that this commission would support in a, in a way more funding. I think that they have, they do reach out to Colorado, Arizona, Texas with their marketing strategies. And I think there's, there's service to this area. And there's money that has come in, so.
I think when the board reviewed their supplemental, they did have some questions as far as, yes, they don't provide much lodging. And they suggested that maybe they could provide from when they rent out their RV site, that they contribute that lodging hats to the camp to help with that. And it's also something that they question as far as, you know, like people come out to camp or whatever. But they come and don't really spend a whole lot of money as far as going to the grocery stores here or they come already with that stuff.
Okay. Well, I think that there's probably that discussion that they, that I just had with them on charging that little extra fee for their overnight and those RV spots or camp spots. That helps them, you know, just that, you know, they've gotten, I guess it's just they've gotten smaller and smaller. I mean, it's been big hit into them up there. So, I still feel that they would, there's a big benefit. Directly through lodgers, as far as contribution to that. But they're willing to do. So, I think that they're going to have a major impact in the next year's lodger tax.
And I don't know, maybe, uh, do you know, would like to share some of these facts?
Thank you, Morna. Good morning, Chair, and good morning to all of the commission. We have a lot of groups that submit the money. Usually, it's enormous amount of money and we have a percentage of that to give. We had over $300,000 worth of requests. And we got to look and listen and see what all of these organizations are doing to increase tourism in Tous. When you compare what goes on in Costilla, I understand, and they have been receiving a lot of money from previous boards. But we take into consideration what impact they have in our county. And it's not as strong as some of these other organizations that are putting heads in beds, people in our restaurants, generating GRT and more lodger tax. And so, we have to take and look at what impact they have in our community. And we just don't see them as a very strong impact. We try to be fair with everybody. And some of these people that are making tourism a little bit stronger, a little bit better, we have the same issues going on in Commissioner O'Donnell's area. But we do try to support everybody that is doing something for tourism. We have a farmhouse now that is trying to do a little fiesta there. And it's, it's not a destination, but it is a place that people do like to stop. They look at their church. So, they kind of created a little fiesta. They requested some money. And we looked at what they actually charge for advertising. And that's what we helped them with. And that's what we're trying to help the organization where we're at, Costilla, La Cota Coa. Now, in the past, they were receiving lots of funding. I mean, I look at, when I was on the other side requesting money for Kiwanis, I would see that they were receiving excessive amounts of money. And what we did is, as our board, we looked at what impact do they actually have in tourism? And that's our focus. We don't give percentage. We just look at who's putting heads in beds in Tous. So, we really are contributing to the towns, to their lodger tax, which we're going to try to work with them so we can give more lodger tax to give off to the entire community, whether it be the town or the county. But impact to tourism is what we want our focusing in. And that's, fortunately, we have... we, we have, uh, there used to be requests of twenty thousand, because that's what they were getting, and now if they can generate some kind of tourism, some kind of GRP, and show us proof of that, maybe we can give them a little bit more, um, more priority. And it's all I can say.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Donnell?
Um, yes, how many RV campsites do they have up there?
A few hundred. I don't, they have two hundred, and the funny thing is, is that they're, you know, once the season opens, they're full every weekend, and not during the week. And I, I think that most people do come with some supplies, but the majority of it gets bought here in Taos, because they know that this is the main source of groceries before they get up in that area. Um, you know, I, I understand that there's these smaller organizations that bring a one-time hit, and I think that Rio Costilla continues to have an impact throughout the summer, and, and, you know, semi-annually throughout this whole area that they have an impact, so it's not just a, a one-time weekend deal where they put heads in bed, but this is heads in beds, or this is money coming in overall throughout the summer from June all the way into September, you know, so, and then there's also the idea that that association has something during the winter time where these people need to sleep, and they're not sleeping in Costa or in Costilla, they're probably sleeping here in Taos, so there's, there's that impact as well, so, you know, it's not just a, a one-time hit for the weekend, that some of these projects of these organizations are doing here, huh? And I'm not discriminating in any of these requests that these other folks have put in, it's just, uh, you know, there's, there's people there that need jobs, and there's people up there that depend on what the livestock association does, people buy, don't lose, uh, people who want some work, so.
I think if they could, uh, we, the board is pretty good about asking organizations to maybe come forth and, or if they're new, yeah, if they could provide some kind of, like, statistics or history of, you know, we tried, we rent out these many spaces for camping, or, and we have our event, all the hotels are booked, we took surveys, we asked where they stay, where they're coming from. So that helps the board to determine, you know, this is a viable event, and it is contributing to, to the county, and providing GRPs or lodging. So I think if they could provide us with some kind of history, saying, okay, we have all these spaces rented out, but also if they could contribute those lodging rates to us, that would be beneficial to them as well.
Mr. Chairman, that was my question, what, what do they charge per RV space to the night, and are they collecting GRPs? I think those are the two kind of important questions.
So as far as...
It's not GRP, it's lodgers'.
Lodgers', well.
So as far as lodgers' tax, we don't get, they have not ever submitted anything, so they may be charging, but they're not giving a lodger's tax, and I don't know if they're not charging a lodger's tax, and that's why? But that's something that you need to contact them and let them know, you need to start charging a lodger's tax for your RV spots.
And what is that?
It's five percent for the month, yeah.
Maybe what I'll do is I'll ask someone in the board to come on and, with you all, how to incorporate that in the review or whatever you need to do. Get that set up.
That would be great.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. O'Donnell? And these grants are purely for advertising?
Yes, the funding can only be used for advertising, purchase of...
I was curious, those, those RV medals apply for four thousand, they may not only two hundred.
Let me, uh, see my notes up here.
Corey, Mr. Chairman, you know? Those RV medals, the garden?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then, Mr. Chairman, I've already held them, and I'll see, who is that?
So that's the mothers' evening?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
One of the things that the RV members do is they end up heading a lot of meetings here with different counties, and they're putting heads in beds, they've shown that in their brochure and their information that they provided us. So they are actually making impact on tourism here in Taos. Thank you.
Uh, anything else?
Yeah, someone has a serious...
I am, other people, Commissioner, please put your phone down. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Blakenhart?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, it's a hard job, that's really tough to, to parse all of that out, and I guess, you know, you've got your formulas that, uh, that you use. I, I just was wondering about that movie, that movie about Lady Gaga, I know that, um, it was supposed to be shown, you know?
Yes, and he, uh, unfortunately, he did not turn in the submission on time.
Well, that makes it a lot easier.
So that was, yeah, an issue for that one, right?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, I'll yield to you if you have additional questions before I answer my questions.
No, good.
Alright, thank you.
Call on you.
Um, I have this Taos Jazz Bebop Society, Taos Jazz Bebop Society, Frank Morgan, so I'm assuming this is the same group, and they put in two applications, is that allowed?
Uh, yes, because they're two separate events.
Okay. Um, and then, who is Soundstapes? What's Soundstapes?
So Soundstapes is a group that provides music events at the TCA, they put on, and they bring, uh, kids, uh, youth here, and they teach them, so they bring them from all over and they perform at the TCA.
Okay, and then, what's this Taos Duplicate Bridge Club?
Uh, so this event has been actually a couple of years, uh, it's a really big event, you would be actually surprised at the number of people that come to this. Um, it's a pretty big thing, it's grown over the last couple of years, that it's, they ask for money, so it is a big, big deal for, for, as far as the event, we did, they did provide information as far as when their event takes place, the hotels are booked.
Uh, okay, and then, I'd like to move some money around, I'd like to give more money to the Taos Art Council, they do so much work, they requested sixty-one, and you're giving them, uh, twenty-five, and I'd like to find a way to move, I don't know who exactly, we take a couple hundred each.
Commissioner, if, if I could remind you, the committee that voted on this was appointed by all of us, they heard the presentations, they weighed it accordingly, they did it over, um, time, each one of these persons was appointed by us as our representative, and I think that circumventing the, the committee, if we move things around to our likings to keep the, um, to keep it fair, the committee recommendations are based on their many hours of work on this, after hearing presentations, after reviewing the application, and there's a reason behind it, which has been explained by Mr. Mapoya, and I really would caution against going against a committee, because then we're not going to have a committee anymore.
I appreciate and respect what, what you just said, however, I'm not talking about a lot of money here, um, it seems like Cardanero's got two hundred more, I'd like to put that into, part of it into Rio Costilla, and part of it into, um, the Taos Art Council. Um, the Duplicate Bridge Club, they meet at Onceanas, is that the group that meets at Onceanas, or is that...
It's a, it's a, uh, it's a big event that comes in there on various, uh...
Mr. Chairman, um, the Bridge Club, actually, I think they do regional events every other year, that's why I asked you, they didn't get anyone, but they bring in a ton of people from our region, they sell out hotels, that really is a huge event for the...
Which is usually an entire week long.
Yes, and it's, it's a long event, and it's books on the entire time, um, and they bring spouses that end up playing golf and going out and doing other things while they're playing bridge, so.
Mr. Chairman, um, with all due respect to Commissioner O'Donnell, the Taos Center for the Arts, we did increase their, we gave them five thousand last year, this year we gave them a grand.
Oh, no, I'm talking about number twenty-three, the Taos Art Council.
And they work very closely with the Taos Center for the Arts, um, uh, the Taos Art Museum, Paseo, so, we look at the arts all collectively, and we split money between the arts, and, and then we look at other entities and what they're doing, whether it's a day-long event, or overnight event, week-long events, things like that, weekend events, so we take all these things into consideration.
And additionally, Commissioner O'Donnell, we have a motion and a second to, um, accept what was presented, so you're, you're moving? Excuse me?
I can make an amendment.
Excuse me, the person that made the motion can, so...
No, no, anybody can make a motion, an amendment, it doesn't have to be the person presenting the...
Anyway, so, there is a motion and a second on what was presented by the committee.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make an emotion, a motion to amend that...
We can't act on the motion until we've, we've set this motion.
Amendments are acted on first, so if it dies, it dies, but I'm gonna make a motion to amend, uh, this, to, uh, give another, to take two hundred from the Los Cardaneros Club, and give a hundred to the Taos Art Council, and a hundred more to Rio Costilla Lifestyle.
Here, no, second to your amended, proposed amendment, the original motion stands. Any other discussion, commissioners? Let's call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Daigos?
Yes.
Sheriff Dago?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I also want to thank the board, because it is a volunteer board, and they did take quite a long time to review these and asked really good questions, so I just wanted to thank them for that, and thank you, Commissioners.
And thank the board, also thank you for the... Item B is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of date and time to hear the appeal of the decision of the planning commission regarding administrative zero-zero-three dash two-zero-one-six, presented by Commissioner, where are the planning directors? Good morning, Edward, how are you?
Good, thank you, how are you?
Good.
Good, thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Corvina, the speaker, Mr. Smolcik, the territorial members of the public. I respectfully come before you this morning to request a date and a time that you would like to have a public hearing on the appeal of the decision of the planning commission regarding administrative permit zero-zero-three dash two thousand and sixteen. Administrative permit zero-zero-three dash two thousand and sixteen is for the approval of a alley-cabin parking area at number seventy-seven Abajo Oondo, Abajo Seco, also known as the Oondo Seco Road in the community of Abajo Oondo. The appeal was received on May thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, and in accordance with ordinance two thousand and fifteen dash two, Taos County Land Use Regulations, within forty-five calendar days of receipt of an appeal, the decision of the planning commission, the planning director shall present the appeal to the Ford County Commissioners for hearing. The end of the forty-five calendar days is July fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Therefore, in order to comply with the land use regulations, the public hearing on the appeal shall be heard before July fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Based on the hearing before the planning commission, I anticipate the public hearing to be three to four hours. I believe that you are scheduled to have your Ford County Commissioners meeting on July eleventh, and stacking a three to four hour public hearing is a very scheduled meeting of the Ford County Commissioners, may, may need for a long day. Obviously, I will yield to you, but I would like respectfully suggest a special meeting to hear the appeal, such special meeting as previously stated shall take place before July fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Chairman, commissioners?
What is your recommended date?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners?
Do you have your calendars up?
Again, Mr. Chairman, we need to have this hearing take place before July fourteenth. By determining the date, if you would be acceptable, so it would be any calendar, July thirteen, twelve, or thirteen.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, any of those days is good for me.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you.
I'm okay. Vice Chair?
I'm okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blakenhart? So your recommendation is either, like...
July twelfth or July thirteenth, Mr. Chairman, and, and if we will yield to you, but I'd prefer to have a person in the morning and get it taken care of, not me in the morning, or whether you'd like it early in the afternoon?
Probably morning, Mr. Chairman, is better for me.
Uh, Chairman, the Commissioner's chair is not available on the thirteenth, so it'll be a little afternoon or the thirteenth, but in the morning...
So the talk is?
Well... Let me check if I have my calendar real quick, sorry. I believe the twelfth does work in the morning for me, it does not work in the afternoon. So, you need that in a form of a motion?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I tend to, to a good second.
A second, Chairman?
Okay.
The discussion is, if you're not gonna be available in the afternoon, and it goes...
Well, it's later. Okay. So, um, I have a motion to set, to schedule the date and time to hear the appeal of the decision of the planning commission regarding amendment zero-zero-three dash two-zero-one-six to be July, Wednesday, July twelfth, beginning at nine AM.
And, Mr. Chairman, is there going to be a site visit prior or during that time?
Um, Chairman and Commissioners, if I may, Mr. Beho and I have been to this site a couple of times, because we've been involved in this process for several months, and we discussed that possibility, and I think it's, legally it's possible to do, and it would be very helpful to this particular application, I think they were personally serious to see it on the ground. They could schedule, obviously, a publicly announced meeting for a site visit prior to actually hearing the application, or at another time, uh, prior to the meeting on the application, maybe appeal.
If we did it two-to-one, then you don't have to notice it, but we should schedule it three times.
Uh, Commissioner, obviously, the concern is that the hearings certainly take place before the fourteenth, to be in accordance with the land use regulations, that, that could be a problem for us, you know? Obviously, I guess if we decided that we wanted to do a satisfaction, that takes longer than what we anticipated, we could come back and, and continue to debate certain the public hearing, and we, everyone was going in accordance, but I would yield to the speaker.
Um, I think that would be fine, and we would consider the site as a part of the quayside judicial hearing, so it would have the same parameters, which I know the commissioners are familiar with. Although, we, we would not receive public comment during that part of it, it would be part of the presentation by staff.
And, and to address that a little bit further, obviously, if you do choose that you want to do the satisfaction, your role is strictly to interpret the site and ask questions only of staff, if you decide that you want to ask any questions answered regarding the application, and that is the extent of the satisfaction.
Mr. Chairman, the satisfaction after the meeting?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, we're saying in between?
Two seconds.
Oh, two separate, um, we could, yeah, we could do it that way, it's probably cleaner to try to do it all at once, but we could, and then we close the quayside judicial hearing, that would be the staff presentation without public comment, and they come back and, um, let the app can present their part of the application and move on with the public hearing.
And the speaker, is it true that none of the five commissioners have contacted anyone to do any investigation or interviews regarding this matter prior to the hearing of the...
That's correct, they like to think of it like you're a judge or jury, um, a quayside judicial hearing is considered like a trial almost, where there's evidence presented, as far as to know how, and, um, it would be inappropriate for you to affect your partiality by having any ex parte communications involved, or doing your own investigation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, uh, the speaker touched on that a little bit, just for, for your knowledge and for your information, the hearing on this chosen date that would be considered a de novo hearing, so needing new information, new signals, maybe some as well.
Alright, any other comments?
So we're having a site visit after our meeting on the eleventh, is that...
Now I have to be noticed as well, I'm thinking as part of the publication.
So Chairman, Commissioners, that would be correct, we would need to provide numbers... of the satisfaction if you choose to have it on the 11th, and would also need to provide notice of the public hearing if you choose to have it on the 12th.
Yeah, we did it right after the meeting, we're all here, I think it's very valuable, and thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for bringing that into the conversation. So, the motion will actually reflect this, that the schedule will reflect a June 11th site inspection shortly after the July 11th regular commission meeting, followed by the formal hearing, which will convene at 9:00 a.m., July 12th. Is that acceptable for the motion? That was me.
Yes.
And the second?
I think, second, yes.
Okay. So we will go on the amendment adding the July 11th site inspection first. Clerk Colerwood.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Duncan.
Yes. So regarding the motion? Clerk Colerwood.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Duncan.
Yes. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Okay, next item is item C, this is a discussion only regarding a proposal ordinance for off-highway vehicles, all terrain vehicles, possibly conducted by a judge of jury, Cordula, and assisted by Mrs. Susan Baker, our attorney.
Good morning again, Chairman.
Yeah, there's a couple today, if you want to, along with the audience, or support
or anything over this issue. If this had been placed back on the agenda for more discussion today, it was a hold or thought that they would be further into the process, and it would actually be an action. Not to that point yet, apparently. Did talk to Miss Baker, talked about and discussed the ordinance, there are any other ideas and things floating around out there. I would stand for any questions, my part of it's pretty much done. There is a draft ordinance, it's open for legal review, discussion amongst the commission, and then a decision at some point.
I had a question, and either one of you can chime in on this. This has to do with county roads only, and it sets where they're on approved county roads, so the approval process, it doesn't do all county roads, it's not labeled this way, so if a certain neighborhood association or something did not want this, then theirs would be excluded, correct?
Well, the way we could do the ordinance, the way it's written, it would authorize use on any paved county road. It does have some safety provisions, it requires helmets, it requires the driver be 18 years old, requires that passengers, it limits the amount of passengers, it dictates the size of the vehicle, so it has a lot of good safety precautions, but it would allow use on all paved county roads, and then the unpaved roads are not addressed, but my understanding is they're already allowed on unpaved roads, so by allowing access to paved roads, you're allowing more access to unpaved roads, obviously, some unpaved roads wouldn't have access unless you're traveling on a paved road first. The same would be true for trailheads. Having dealt with this issue twice in Colorado, in Teyraide and Tampa, Teyraide, Rico, it's a very complex issue, and my recommendation would be that maybe we study it a little more, we look at major arterials in terms of access to public lands, where there's an allowed use of BLM land, for example, where the BLM's saying, yeah, there's allowed recreational use, and those people who want to access that BLM trail might be limited because the trailhead's small, they can't trailer their OHVs, and so by allowing drivers to be on county roads, we're allowing that access. However, we want to ensure compatibility with neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods might object to the noise, I'm working with zoning in certain neighborhoods where they object to noise from certain uses, and I'm certain they would object to noise, the noise of OHVs. So there's a lot to look at, the way that I've done it in the past is to actually look at designated paved county roads and choose certain roads where the use is allowed. So you have a map, and these again would be major arterials that would access, let's say recreational areas outside of Quesada River, where there's public land, and users want to get on a trailhead. Do we want them in residential neighborhoods? I think there could be some dangers because we have children and dogs in some of our areas, you know, where the houses are close to a dirt road, and people go fairly fast on these vehicles, and there can be a collision. So, lots to talk about, I think there are good things in this ordinance, and if the Board wants to move forward with this ordinance, which I think came from Sebola County, they've enacted one, I think it's a model from Sebola, that the sheriff was able to get, then we need to publish a notice to have the Board consider it at a future meeting. My recommendation would be to take a step back, or put planning, planning is busy right now, but as they have time, and then study some other issues like unpaved roads, maybe limiting certain residential neighborhoods, going even a step further in looking at access to public lands. I've talked to a lot of people about this in the last couple of weeks, and I know in some circumstances where actually encouraging illegal use of public lands that could affect old archaeological sites, including, I mean, that's what one comment was, someone who lives in Honda, near the river. So, I don't know, there's a lot to talk about, but I'd like some direction from the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is why we talked about last week moving forward, and having it as a working document that can be rendered, as we need to butcher it more, or infer into some part of season, if people are going to use this machinery on public plans, you've got BLM enforcers to enforce those things when people are out there illegally, so we don't need to worry about what's going on, that's responsibility, BLM, game, fish, or service, so I feel very confident and comfortable with what's been drafted, I'm believing to move forward.
Commissioner Blankenhart, thanks, Jim. Is it, so it's true that all ATVs can be used now on county roads that are not paved? Is that true?
As the state law reads, this ordinance is adopted to be in compliance with that, and that's what state law says, so that's why I...
That's clear.
Now, private roads or non-county road and public access and stuff is out there for interpretation, you have subdivisions that can put up...
They're all under jurisdiction of it.
They have no enforcement, they overgoes anyway. This, the purpose of this is to allow access by a county road access to, for farmers, ranchers in, to enhance tourism, that's the focus of what this ordinance would bring, and should you choose to pass.
And Chairman, Commissioners, a correction, what the state has done is enact a legislation that gives the local government the authority to allow or not on our paved roads, currently on the paved roads, just the paved roads, and currently we don't allow them on the paved roads, so we have an enacting statute that will allow them, so they're not allowed by people. By enacting this, we would be allowing them.
Right, so we're only talking paved county roads here because they're already allowed on dirt roads. Is there any value in identifying the paved county roads that, you know, clearly would meet the objective of enabling farmers and ranchers and recreational users to access the land that they need? You know, in other words, are there some paved county roads that wouldn't fit into those categories, or could be excluded?
I guess, Commissioner, you can be as restrictive as you want to be if you want to spend time and research that, and say, this road, yes, this road, not. One that comes to mind is Highway 578, which is a state highway, but by the county adopting the ordinance, would give us the ability to go into the state and say, if it's allowable now on our county roads. Highway 578 is outside of, part of it is outside of the town of Red River, goes to the Upper Valley, it's a seven-mile stretch that goes up in Dan Yes. Being able to go back to the state and say, it's within our county, it's outside of the town limits, you've already allowed the town of Red River to utilize that for access by their ordinance, give us the last four miles of that for access to trailheads as well. So there are some areas that I'm familiar with, there are a whole lot that I'm not.
Have you contacted the state about opening up 57?
Yes, 578, I've spoken with Secretary Church from there, and essentially, even though the state law allows for the part of transportation to do that, they were not willing to on their own. Essentially, they want an ordinance from the county.
That's what they had.
So I think, then they will give consideration to it.
And what about, what is a limited access highway or freeway? I know they're excluded, but I didn't know what they were, it wasn't the definition.
State or federal roadways. We have no jurisdiction over those anyway, so.
And 40 miles an hour is the limit that's used in other local areas?
Commissioner Blankenhart, if I may, respond to that because I looked at that and was observing just where, the area where I live. The way it raises the posted speed limit, governs the, the stamp posted speed limit, which is true in a lot of the county, it would be 40, and again, if they were going to revisit those, like my recommendation, like on El Salto, you said as an example, there's a lot of greenery, it's highly desirable to get up to the waterfalls, there's a lot of OHVs, you know, it's probably illegal, it would become legal, but I would recommend that the county would want to post a speed limit there, probably less than 40, because there are lots of pedestrians on that road, it's the disabilities for it, there could be an accident if we don't lower the speed limit.
I, I, what do you think of that suggestion?
I would chime in with Miss Baker on that, there are a lot of county roads that are unposted, and they're posted anyway regardless of this ordinance.
Of course, El Salto being paved is, is arguable.
It's a draft, you know, I heard from the community, I heard from some Commissioners, and I took this upon myself to bring something to the governing body for your consideration, and I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to stay involved with it, but honestly, I think I've kind of reached the end of my expertise in drafting this. My focus was to make sure that the safety and equipment and the operators, and things like that were regulated in it, I feel very comfortable, I covered that, and the rest of it, Commissioners, is what you need.
Yeah, so just to close here on my thing is that I would be concerned about the 40 miles per hour on some roads, and I like the suggestion of posting our own speed limits there, that would lower that in places where necessary, and I still, and I do still share legal concerns about some paved county roads possibly being excluded, but I also understand Vice Chair, Chairman's concerns with getting something done this season, so, anyway, that's what I...
Every meeting I've had with Mr. Omero, it's been safety oriented, when I started this with you a year ago, pretty broken, so, did you have anything, any, anything else, Commissioner, for, would you let Mr. Omero, Mr. O'Donnell?
Well, I just wanted to point out that Senate Bill 51 changed the OHV Act and allows people over 18 years old to now have to wear helmets, and if you are driving an OHV on paved roads, that they must purchase and affix the required license plate, plus a sticker that allows them to go onto public lands. I just want to make sure, and this was from the game and fish off-highway vehicle program manager, I just want to make sure that we, make sure we're jiving with Senate Bill 51, kind of jiving with the state requirements on accessing public lands, those people have to have a sticker plus a license plate, and I don't know, I did a quick read on your ordinance, I don't know if you are requiring helmets, but if you're also requiring that these off-highway vehicles comply with Senate Bill 51, that they have a vehicle license plate, some kind of sticker that allows them to go on public lands.
That is actually already in place, OHVs even for use on public lands are required to be registered to have license, it's not a license plate any longer in New Mexico now, it's a resident sticker or a non-resident sticker if you're a non-resident of New Mexico. That's already required, and the other part of that...
Was a sticker to go onto public lands.
That's, that's already covered by motor vehicle currently, and then the $7 permit to drive is a way the state can collect fees off of what they're allowing, local option to accomplish it. So, you know, there's, there's a lot to be discussed about it, I presume, or it could be a pretty straightforward thing, it depends upon the will of the commission.
Chairman and Commissioners, one last comment, and I did speak to some of the sheriff's department, and the sheriff was present, he's been reticulating about the ordinance as it exists and the speed limit issue, and I was told that there would be a recommendation that there would be ten additional officers to enforce the speed limit and to ensure that people dealing with 18 and over...
First one, first one, that's that.
Okay, yeah, concerned about compliance with some of the safety regs and the need for more officers to patrol.
Yeah, and actually, by making it legal, it could, you know, it can away from the official, so there's two sides to that sort of, and the other sheriff and I have discussed that, so. The other point, Commissioner O'Donnell, was about the helmet law, and essentially what has, what the state law and regulations on OHV now mirrors the on-highway motorcycle regulation, which is helmet is required for any operator of an ORP accident that's under 18, so it brought this OHV law consistent with what the highway traffic.
I'd like to turn the podium to some of the residents.
Hi, hi, just your chair members of the commission, if you can look at this over in agreement with everything here except on section five, letter V, any person under the age of 18 shall not operate ROHV or MCV. We, we feel that that should be changed to 16-year-old licensed driver and/or manufactured recommendations, a lot of them's OHV manufactured, do recommend that not under the age of 16, so trying to see that, I create a situation where we're going to make people break the law again, and again, as Chairman mentioned, we, you know, we've been thinking nothing about safety with this, and how do we make this happen, where we don't get people screaming on the roads or trying to get to a place without having an accident. Most of the accidents that happen is for someone trying to not be legal anymore, so, and, you know, I guess, Miss Baker is concerned about going into different neighborhoods and stuff, let's just start dissecting this to that point, you know, just going to take a neighborhood association to say we don't want them here anymore. I think that the way it's written now is the way that we should move forward with it, the people that I've been talking to, which, I've talked to people on both sides of the bench, and we find that we have more and more people in support of this, especially when it comes to ranching, hunting, and getting into a recreational use area, so I'd like to see us in the folder for this. Thank you.
Mr. Cordula, anything to add?
Yes, Darryl Cordula, Mr. Commissioners, you know, just to interact a little bit with Sheriff Cordula, you know, he's one aspect of law enforcement, but you also have Forest Service, BLM, I'll give you an example, I went up with my brothers to the cows, Forest Service rated cows, so we invited a couple of friends, it was 13 of us, and we went from Hopewood Hill, and lo and behold, there was a ranger that about stopped and checked every one of us, every one of us was in compliance, registered, we had insurance, I had my grandson with me, he had his helmet, that's what we're looking at is the safety aspect. In regards to, Miss Baker, you know, I'm dissecting the neighborhoods, but these OHVs aren't any other than hardy David's, and you guys have heard, these hardy David's is open down the road, private areas, you've been there, and you're interacting with that, not only do the Forest Service check our exhaust systems, because it's mandatory, when you're in the Forest Service, you have to have spark arrestors, just like a chainsaw, anybody going to get wood and stuff like that, and your OHVs and prodigal exhausts have to pass that requirement, if they don't have spark arrestors, they're not allowed. So that's another law enforcement that's going on these.
Thank you, Mr. Corleone. Okay, so it seems to me, adhering that we proceed with this in the tiniest fashion. Is that correct, Commissioners?
It's not a fashion, right?
No, it is not.
Okay, we would need a resolution to publish to notice the public about the reso... I'm sorry, the ordinance is coming before the board in a public hearing. So we could do a resolution to publish on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
If the board is in agreement.
Okay. I see nodding as if it had an unofficial capacity, so we'll proceed. Thank you, everybody. Okay, going to item ten, Miami manager's report of matter. First is update to county officials regarding side effects of the county, Mr. Corleone.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to start with giving you some updates on road projects, projects that have been going on and that we've been preparing for for a while. The Corleone's paving project is set to begin June nineteenth. And we hope that would take no more than ten days to finish that. Whit Road and El Salto Road, we'll see overlay paving projects. We'll be utilizing red and not blue for both of those. And we hope to get those done and recommenced in early July. And hopefully, you'll see those contracts on the twenty-seventh. We've asked our engineer for an update on Chanisa Road, and we're still waiting to receive that. We hope to watch a date on that in early July. Sangre Estorba and Camino del Medio Road, it's currently being worked on right now. They've been placing base core for the last two days. They should have it substantially complete by the end of the week. So that is a project that we've been working on for years, the Camino del Medio and Sangre Estorba is almost done. So I want to thank Mr. Adamio and Public Works, all of the work that they've put into preparing us to have projects in the summer instead of the fall. And it's really, I think, a huge testament to their hard work and the planning that they've put in through the winter and the previous fall. We did receive this letter from the Pecado's Pueblo. It was addressed to everyone. So I just wanted to hand it out to you and let you know that we are having to set up a meeting with the governor over there. There's some concern over some roads. We met with the Pueblo a few weeks back in discussions of rural addressing. And we kind of started talking about a few roads, and there was some confusion and frustration on your end as to what is ours and what is theirs. So we want to meet with them and we're going to discuss all of those issues. A lot of it is both, and it's going to get a little complicated. I think a lot of times we own or we have rights to most of the road, but then there's parts that aren't in coverage. And so just wanting to inform the commission of that and let you have that letter.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, this can become a real big legal issue.
We're hoping to avoid making it a big legal problem. We're going to talk with first internally about what we claim to have a right to and what we have the ability to work on, and then we'll... The governor did not make it seem like it's going to be, they just wanted clarification. And so we're hoping at this point, it is very cordial, and we'll continue to work together to get to some kind of resolution. We would like to avoid potential fight from this.
But on the other way, if we did see roads that are currently on our list, then it would not, it would no longer be our responsibility to maintain it?
I think that's a discussion we need to have. And then, you know, with the Pueblo, the ramifications and consequences of us taking some of those off of our inventory would mean it would be their responsibility. Or, likewise, I think there may actually be a voter too that even wants to help or maintain as well. And so I'm not, I can't tell you, I'm surprised at every part of what their discussion is going to be. But I just wanted to let you know that we will follow up and have a meeting with them.
But, Mr. Chairman, is it all sort of that they want to close access to these roads? And what will that do to our residents in New Mexico?
I'm not sure if they're trying to close access. I'm not sure if that's their goal. I do know that there's a directive to the Pueblo's from the federal government to do GIS rural addressing and that's really where their focus is at this point. And I think they're just trying to continue their project by clarifying the roads. When we met with them a couple of weeks ago, I met with them with Eric B. Hill and Tim Corner, and it was, like I said, a rural addressing family issue. But they also don't know all about their own roads within the Pueblo. They have different numbers, from the IA numbers to their internal numbers. And so I think they're just clarifying at this point, and I hope that's the goal.
Mr. Chairman, who's going to be part of these discussions, these meetings?
Well, internally for now, we're going to just talk with Public Works and Mr. Adamio and look at what our road inventory says that we'll have to hold legal, of course, before we really get into substantial negotiations or anything.
Commissioner Romano, I would ask that I be involved in the meetings, just because we have some other counties to the south that have to address our issues.
Yes, I would.
That's a more fashion.
I would like to see that as well, and I possibly leave it to Commissioner O'Donnell, since she is a commissioner in that district.
So there's more questions on that, but they can down. We did receive a letter from Southern Fire Ground, who represents the New Mexico Finance Authority. Basically, this is the ramifications of House Bill Four that was enacted in the last legislative session, the regular legislative session. Basically, what this is doing is because of House Bill Four and changing the way that the money was flowing from the fire protection funds and loans, the Mexico Finance Authority has to repay for every single one of their loans that is leveraged with fire protection funds. So basically, I'm just going to go through the changes. It says changes are only being made to reflect, first, the legislative change to the dates. The protection funds are available for interception pursuant to the documents you executed for each loan. And second, the use of certain special reserve funds that the Finance Authority is making available to fund your payments on a midterm basis if necessary. So we have three loans that this will affect. All those loans have been properly approved and brought into the governing body, and you guys have approved them. At this point, those three loans will each need to be affected in the two ways I just mentioned. It is only asking for the chairman's signature, but I wanted to inform you guys about this. And it will be on the next meeting's consent agenda on June twenty-seventh. But because it's a little complicated, I staffed for any questions and if you want to talk to me offline. But the gist of it is that we used to get the money in one big lump sum every July, and the state has now changed that. For this, next year, we'll be receiving it on a quarterly basis and thereafter on a monthly basis. So the way the Finance Authority originally secured the loans, because it was a big lump sum payment, that was the less risk for the investors that bought the bonds on the open market. Now they have to repay for this in order to show that protection to the investors that bought the bonds and to the intercept agreements, because they take that money directly from us. It never comes to us, and then we cut them a check. They take it directly from the distribution. So they now have to change how they pay that distribution on a monthly basis versus an annual basis.
I reiterate, by contract, the House Bill Four will cripple the fire service and free the state of New Mexico.
This also affects law enforcement protection funds, of which we do not have any leverage. So it will affect us in that particular aspect, but just on a state level, it also affects those funds. This, for NMFA, is a huge undertaking. They had to probably send these out to every one of our thirty-three counties and most of our municipalities. So many of us do leverage fire protection funds, so. I just wanted to inform you of that. Last thing really for today, NMCC conference update. Just wanted to give you guys another quick update on how things are going as we get closer. I think most of the major things have been taken care of. We're looking at a little logistical challenges at this point. Things like they should have all the right tables and all the right, for the most part, and all that. At least, kind of, we've got some good news on a few things.
So we're totally set on our night. We're covered on their night, which is on Thursday night. We did secure that for them. We got Danny Duran and the silver in band, so they are set. I got them for them, so no worries about that. We are currently trying to find tables. We thought we could borrow from UNAM. UNAM has given them to the Ag Center, and the Ag Center says we only have ten to mend. I don't know how we're going to work that. We are shopping around. We're getting sitting up to like a two thousand dollar bill.
How many are you looking for?
Seventy tables and chairs.
What about our community centers? Do you have some of them?
They're, we need rounds. They're all to fit into the jam.
To feed on lunch?
And we tried the schools. The schools also had to rent theirs because the Ag Center would not let them out either. So right now, the...
Does River have round tables? Yes. Oh, there you go. They might have, they might have chairs. Mine doesn't have any round tables. We have a square pool here. I think that County Red River could possibly help us out through the chairs and tables. We don't have anything time on that Thursday.
Okay, okay. And then we did secure, or not secure, but we did get Tough Mountain Casino to sponsor. They're going to give us some swag and some, mine, but we don't have it.
Some swag?
Yes.
Free play?
I was going to say.
Oh, free play?
I have a fan here to the USB things on, so that's what he called it.
I think, I think they can mark free play.
Excuse me?
Free play.
Sir? It's tricky. And we are currently looking for mariachis. The summer is, I guess, all the kids have forgotten how to play, and they don't want to play. So we need, we've only found one group of three, and they're going to cost us some money. So we're trying to, all right, so three hundred dollars for an hour. So that's what we're going to learn.
And I just want to thank all of the, obviously, I want to thank the NUSA and RNEL for working really hard, all of our volunteers that have come up to help them, and of course, the commission. I appreciate all the hard work of all of the mission. Commissioner Fuego has thrown some golf tournaments in the past, so he's been very helpful there. I can tell you it's quite fun to play in the dam. It doesn't seem like it's a, it seems like a lot of work to camera, so.
Yeah, except my son's playing for Chavez County.
Yeah.
And not us.
Well, that's not fair.
That's fair. I think we've, is what I think.
That's all I have for today. I staffed for any questions. Of course, any time you need, I'm always available to the commission. Thank you.
My cousin is on the family team.
Mr. Chairman, all the lodging is handled, the big girl area is booked. Everybody has a place to go to?
Yeah.
Cool.
As I understand it, the Airbnb's are pretty much booked. For that, I think there's only eleven percent of the Airbnb's available left, correct? So it's going to be tight. It's certainly how, it's going to be a big boost to GRT for the tower of the county.
Cool.
And we also, they can tent from the town, Texas, living this, their tent for the videos. We can have a big tent out there, so they can be very, very comfortable with this.
Awesome. Okay. So that moves us to item C. This is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of a letter of support for Rio Grande del Norte National Monument.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Yes, this is a letter, basically reaffirming our support. We've done a couple resolutions supporting it, and this was a request from all the board to sign this letter. Commissioner Romano reminded me that we should put it before the whole board to get their signature. So that's where it's at at this point. I'm just asking for consensus of the whole board, and if you agree to sign it, it will be available upstairs.
Need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion and a second to each of us to sign a letter of support for Rio Grande del Norte National Monument support letter. Discussion for table?
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Bravo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Mr. Dago?
Yes.
Chairman Fuego?
Yes.
Okay, item eleven, under question?
Sure.
The Miami Commission here to report matters. Under any new business you wish that we include on a future meeting. Okay, Commissioner's announcements. Item C is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding possible assistance to the Acequia Arrosa Ditch Association. This will be presented by numerous people that's been requested, Commissioner Romano. Anything you want to start on? Do you want?
Mr. Chairman, I got a message a while ago that they don't plan to compete here. They've gone to the state highway departments. Basically, they were looking for concrete barriers in an effort to block some of the water at the main entry gate of the Arrosa Ditch. They have lost a lot of their gage and basket work that they had done many years ago. Apparently, the wire that wraps the rock rotted. And as a result of that, the, our son, because the members of this ditch have been without water for the last three or four weeks already. And so they advised me that they are now working with the state highway department to get these concrete barriers. I was hoping that we could possibly lend them some from the county if we have any. I don't know if we can do that. There's probably a little bit of liability on our end if we, if we did do something like that. I'll leave it up to Susan to decide that. But I understand that they are planning to go into the river itself to block the water, to try to make the level of the river rise so that they can get the water into the Arrosa Ditch temporarily until the entire compuerta, the headgate, is fixed, reconstructed, probably towards fall this year, early spring next year.
Chairman, Commissioners, it would not be a problem with anti-donation to help on Acequia, because we say it's just government to government, right? When I heard you say something about the river itself, the four oh four permit issue jumped out at me. And I don't know if you know about four oh four with Army Corps, man? And if they're working with the Army Corps on that, sometimes it can take a long time. And I know they're in an emergency situation. And I think to modify a river would probably require reform or somebody more information. I think we could help, I did talk to an attorney who represents a lot of Acequia associations this morning on the way to work, because I saw this on the agenda, and I was curious if we're helping make any else out. And she said she hadn't heard of it, and she works a lot with Acequias throughout northern New Mexico, and works with TDA, and she said that she hadn't heard of a situation where a county government is helping on Acequia. You know, that doesn't mean we can't do it legally. It's just, I think the reason, she said the reason Acequias don't join with that is they like to self-government, and there's concern that if we start helping and we get involved in the governance. So it's something to think about.
Thank you. I appreciate the legwork that everyone has done with this. I would still like to kind of keep their requests open. If we did have these concrete barriers, Mr. Chairman, available at the road department, that we could at least maybe lend them to them and transport them to the site. And I understand that the Kit Carson Electric Co-op is volunteered to put the concrete barriers in the river themselves. If, I'm very familiar with the full application of Army Corps engineers. I understand that as long as there is no equipment in the river, there should not be a violation. They're concerned that if there were backhoes or whatever, spilling oil, or if there was an accident, if that spilled oil or other matter into the river, then that, those waters go directly into the Rio Grande, and that would be a violation of their, of their regulations.
I just asked Bobby to come forth. Bobby found, is that the same funding source possibly? Possibly. Very cumbersome, he said, but he's been trying to find any way to help them. And he said there was a grant program?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I spoke with a gentleman by the name of Brian Rayos. He is their field engineer and comes up to assess the situation. He did, you know, that there was some emergency fundings that were out there that they would have to put in for, but it's, I guess, a tiny situation that they have to go up there to get that funding and it takes some time to get that. I've been trying to get in touch with the state engineer and I've put in about 10 phone calls to him and I've not heard back. I called him twice this morning, left him a voicemail. So I'm hoping that there's something that I can get back to him and maybe keep in touch with Mr. Martinez to get the situation taken care of and any way that we could help out as far as the concrete barriers. I'll keep in touch with Ron one as well, so we could help them out.
Do we have any possible, Mr. Chairman, do we have anything available, any concrete barriers?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I have to go and talk to Mr. Pacheco and see if they have anything available.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we'll look at what they're going to give to. I can't think of any value, but there may be something that we can go find. Certainly, we can't, then there, we appreciate Kit Carson offering help as well.
That's cool. And Bobby, keep the fight, you've been going an extra mile here and I really appreciate you trying to help these people.
And we've been keeping in contact with Homeland Security as well, just so they're aware of the situation. So I keep in touch with them on a daily basis.
Thank you, Mr. Romero, I appreciate that. Because I understand that it's about 80 acres of irrigated land that is not receiving water at this point, hasn't for the last almost a month or so.
Yes, sir. And they didn't really know what the, you know, I've covered a little bit.
And it's affecting their crops and everything else.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would, Mr. Chairman. I made the same request. If you find buried concrete barriers, I need them in post-heat or is it going to, this one has affected homes? I don't understand that the sector is reporting as well. There are people's homes in danger, being flooded. And I made them this request to see what can be assisted in helping up in that area. So, you know, Mr. Romero, I understand that there's people don't get to irrigate. But there's people's homes in my, in my district that are in the verge of losing their light, their home. So if there's something up there, you know, I want to see it be done of request of, I mean, I have a question on the post-heat area. First, before we generate people water, I think the homes are more important.
Well, that's to be determined.
You know, we're going to be asking for this to be done to assist in that. The decision, we have enough resources to assist everybody and we just want to take priority.
Chairman, Chairman Commissioners, that everyone's raising good points. I don't know if this is to the stage of an emergency. Would you consider this an emergency? There are ways legally we can declare an emergency. Again, I don't know if we're there, but.
And I commit the recommendation, but it would have to come from the manager or the chairman to declare a state of emergency. After speaking with our area Red from Homeland Security, he did say that at this particular moment, it does not meet the requirements to do a state of emergency.
Did he visit the area if you know?
Um, not the area, but we've gone up and we worked times, I've taken pictures of everything from the debris that they have removed from there. I don't know if that was any of the issue with what happened with Acequia, but, you know, you can see where they were doing a little bit of work, but I don't know if any of that had any issues with that part.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that they had to remove the debris because it was already starting to cross the, you know, Taos River, the water was. And I know for a fact also that there were other properties that were, that were damaged along the river. I mean, it was because of high waters.
So the Tulsa, the road department has, they put sandbags, I don't know if you've touched the area. And when we were having that flooding issue, that's why they put them under the bags to kind of divert it back in to the field there.
Okay, thank you, Bobby, for being on top of it. If you will keep us informed through emails and any changes or anything that comes up. If there's anything, we just want to know from you and not hear them wall guard or something like that.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely keep in touch with them. We'll ask them to know what's going on.
Thank you.
All right. Any else, Commissioner? Yes. So this is a action item. Commissioner Romero?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion that if we do have available for our disposal, concrete barriers at the highway, at the road department, or if we can get them from the state highway department, that they would be available and that Taos County could assist in acquiring them for the use of the needs of the Arrosa Ditch Association.
You've heard the motion?
Second.
This second. So we have a motion and a second to try to find concrete barrier assistance for the Arrosa Ditch Association. Any further discussion? Or call it off?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Bravo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuego?
Yes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is item 12, the consent agenda. I will read each item. If any commissioner has a question regarding an item, so we pull it. And Brunel has provided me with the appropriate department head that would need to be summoned to, if you have further questions, Commissioner Corvo could not answer. So item A, approval of DFA Resolution of 34, 2016, 17 fiscal year. Resolution requesting to adjust the 2017 fiscal year budget to accurately reflect budget increases or decreases in revenue funds. Item B is approval of DFA Resolution 35 of 2016, 17 fiscal year. Resolution requesting to adjust 2017 fiscal year budget to accurately reflect budget increases or decreases with revenue funds. Item C, discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for fiscal year in part one, that's in the general fund. D is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for fiscal year in two for special revenue fund. Item E is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of the budget adjustment for fiscal year in three, in part three, that's in the intergovernmental fund. Item F is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for fiscal year in part four, that's in the Fire Exise Tax Fund. Item G is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for fiscal year in part five, Fire Protection Fund. Item H is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for fiscal year in part six, which is in our public works fund. I is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval to purchase new SCBA. Those are self-contained breathing apparatus packs, bottles and masks for the Puebla Seca Fire Department. Item J, discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of renewal number one to contract TCC 2016 dash 040 with WH Pacific. Item K is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of renewal one for solid waste hauling agreement, TCC 2015 dash 049 between Taos County and Pueblos Pueblo. Item L is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of renewal one solid waste hauling agreement, TCC 2015 dash 049 between Taos County and Taos Pueblo. Item M is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of a memorandum of agreement between Taos County and North Central Solid Waste Authority. And item N is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of contract TCC 2016 dash 007 R383 with the Humane Society of Calistromenical Business as straight parties. I would like a motion to approve all items eight through N, unless there's an item, Commissioner, which is approved from the consent agenda. I would second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to approve consent agenda, no discussion can occur, or call it off?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Bravo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuego?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 13, House County Board of Commissioners make convenient closed session. Item A would be regarding John Gonzalez versus Taos County. This can be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10 dash 15 dash 1H7, which allows for discussion of any relevant litigation. And item B is regarding county attorney. This matter may also be discussed in closed session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10 dash 15 dash 1H2, which allows us to discuss limited personnel matters. Ms. Baker, is it your recommendation that this board go into executive session at this time?
Yes, yes.
On both items?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, how long will it take? Yeah, we need a lot of Francis, so how long? First one, the second one is very brief. First one is...
I think we could finish them both by, in a half an hour.
Francis, we're trying to do a half hour. And Anna, how we, we'll do our best half hour. So a motion and a second to go into closed session, or call it off?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Bravo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuego?
Yes. Do we need to leave or go upstairs? I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
So, Mr. Chairman, second, third call it off?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gago?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Baker, will you give a report as if we stayed on this topic and what we did in executive session?
We discussed both of the executive session items as noticed. We did not stray from the topic noticed.
A motion to accept, Ms. Baker's.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second and a second, or call it off?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gago?
Yes.
Yes. I like that she was there. She was a week. There's no action item regarding anything on the two items, any litigation and the personnel matters, so we'll move to item 15. Commissioners, what's your opinion?
Move to journey. I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. He is the chairman. Thank you all.
We've got a bunch yet?
Yeah, we've got 17 minutes.